I am glad that you're here. This is the President of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, a nation of our God, in the universal liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Keith, would you take role, please?
Sure. Mary Fox?
Here.
Jeff Newsom?
I'm here. Joe Kalani?
Here.
Sue Grissom?
Here.
Mike Mitchell?
Here.
Tom Murphy?
Here.
Role call is complete.
All right, thank you. Next up, item four, approval of our meeting agenda.
So moved. Support.
All right, we'll go with a motion from Commissioner Kalani and a second from Commissioner Murphy. Any changes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed name motion carries. Item five, approval of meeting minutes. We have none this evening, so we'll pass right on over. We have no public hearing this evening, so we'll pass over that.
All the public?
Yeah. I don't see one on there. You should.
Well, we probably should amend it.
We probably better go back and amend the agenda.
I didn't see it.
Okay, all righty. So, we need to... Can we amend the agenda? Are you okay with that? Add a call to the public?
Friendly amendment to the agenda to add public comment.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed name motion carries. Okay, sorry about that, because we do want to hear from you. So, we have two calls to the publics this evening, one right now and one at the end of the meeting after we're done with the review for the Newberry project. So, if you'd like to have the floor, anything to say before we begin, please feel free to come forward. If not, you'll also have time at the end of the evening. If we can get your name and address. You look familiar.
My name is Richard Roll. I live at 12830 Deer Path Lane. I was here at the first meeting and voiced my opinions on all of this. It was nice last week to hear other people voice their opinions and get feedback from around the community, not only just the property owners that surround this property. But, so it was nice to see the different views. And I was unable to stick around to speak afterwards, so I thought, well, I'll jump in the first thing today.
All right.
Anyway, of course, M-59, the traffic conditions that are going to be presented here with all this, the new development, is mind-boggling, to say the least. Everybody coming out onto M-59, seven o'clock in the morning, et cetera. But you've heard all that, so I'm not going to be redundant on that. My biggest concern is Deer Path Lane and the cluster homes that are going to be 53 feet, 20 cluster homes, 53 feet from my property line. I shouldn't say all of them, but what's it going to be? Fifteen of them are going to be on my property line. 53 feet is not very far. Last week, I watched the video today, last week's meeting, and they're talking about the pine trees, 15 feet pine trees, et cetera, et cetera. That'll never happen. It'd be lucky if you get six or seven or eight foot. And it'll take, you know, 15 years before you even cover any, begin to cover any of these homes. Because these, I understand, are all going to be two-story cluster homes. So, the pine trees are nice eventually to shield for some of the homes for both sides of the line, but kids, dogs are going to be walking through those pine trees coming onto my property. Because I had mentioned before, I own 1,300 and some feet along that property line, that north boundary. They're going to be coming on my property, they're going to be coming on the front yards of these other homes along Deer Path Lane, they're going to be on the road. At the end of that road, there is a retention pond. And as soon as a 12-year-old, 13, 14-year-old boy sees that, they're going to be down there constantly, fishing, whatever. You've got the wetlands, the swamps down Bullard Lake. Eventually, they're going to walk onto that private property to get to that lake. So, I'm very concerned about that. I don't want, I didn't move out here to have a bunch of kids running around. I'm not saying how many, but over the years, there's going to be a bunch of them coming over on our properties. What I recommend, not only recommend, but I urge the commission to tell Mary Berry to put up a barrier of some sort. I mentioned the rock, the brick wall, which I think kind of went down in flames, but a fence such as the vinyl white fence, along with the pine trees, it'd be fine. But there's got to be a barrier between basically Fenton Road all the way to the soccer fields. So, with that, I don't have any further.
All right, thank you. Anyone else at our first call to the public?
I'll go.
Sure, okay. If we could get your name and address.
Jeffrey Hill, 2129 Wilson Lane. This is my first opportunity to be in here. I didn't know about this. I apologize for being kind of late to the party, as they say. I guess it was talked about on Heartland Moms, but I'm not part of that community. So, I received no notification in the mail. I don't know if it's my responsibility to know this and monitor what's happening here, or whether there should have been things mailed out. By the sheer number of people here, I kind of, makes me think maybe more people don't know about it, like me. So, mailing would have been nice, or maybe you did that and I just didn't get it. So, I watched about three hours of video today, entertaining video from your last meeting, thank you, to try to catch up and get up to speed. Actually, personally, I'm surprised that this has lasted this long. I live within earshot and eye shot of this proposed new development off Wilson Lane, and also downwind, I may say, of this development. Several things I'm concerned about, they've all been voiced before, but in bullet points, I'll just tell you, I'm concerned about property values. I moved here in 2000, expecting to live in a rural community. I've got five and a half acres, and I love the freedom and the isolation of that kind of property in this rural living environment. I'm concerned about our investments. You know, we're all trying to recover in housing values, and this, in my opinion, is going to do nothing but drive my housing value down. Secondly, traffic on M-59 is literally, is deadly. If you do, as other people have proposed, go and spend some time looking at this M-59 traffic as it feeds from Tiptico Lake Road when the light releases. It's a line of cars like you can't believe, and they begin to slinky out, so it gets to where it's like, literally like Russian roulette, trying to pull out in that road. Sometimes it takes easily five minutes to pull out safely. I can't imagine thousands of tenants trying to get out onto M-59 if just a few of us, seven houses on Wilson Lane, have that kind of difficulty in pulling one car out. Noise pollution, I'm concerned about the traffic light. Do you all know what truck brakes sound like when they release their air pressure and, you know, squealing brakes in cars, and cars accelerating? There's going to have to be a light put in there of some sort, or everyone down that way to the west is going to be playing Russian roulette with families. The noise pollution, the water table pollution. If this is put on a well, this is going to, this is going to, all the rest of us are on wells in this area. I don't understand the impact of that. But more importantly, when you start putting gas stations in, especially two in close proximity, yeah, gas stations aren't supposed to leak, but they do. And when you have thousands of cars doing oil changes in their driveways and leaking antifreeze and things like that, it gets into the water table. It's a high concentration of toxins going into the water table. As far as crime goes, I can only imagine that crime's going to go up, because you're going to have a lot of people in a very compressed space, a lot of kids. And what do kids do? They wander, like the man had mentioned. Bored kids or troubled kids. And you guys are going to pack them in like sardines into this facility, and the only freedom they have will be to expand out. And when they expand out, they come into the woods by our homes. How do I know that? Because I used to go into the woods by my home when I was younger. The demand on the public resources, I don't know if you're beefing up the staffing on EMS, fire, and police, but imagine that kind of population in that kind of space. There's going to be calls, lots of them, especially when you pack people into tiny spaces, likes being proposed. I mean, my arms, I'm six foot four, okay? So, this is six feet, basically. These houses are being proposed 10 feet apart. I lived in, I lived on an island in San Francisco Bay, and the houses weren't that close together, and that's a pretty tight real estate. I just don't get it. I don't get it. So, I appreciate the developers' enthusiasm for their project. I mean, I know, you know, I believe in capitalism, everybody should make a profit, and they should too. It's zoned in such a way that they're able to build there, but this just looks like a, just a profit, a gouging opportunity. It just looks like they're trying to put every square inch of that place into some kind of profit-generating opportunity. Does anybody remember, there used to be a sunflower field out there? There's beautiful pictures taken there. Those are going to be, you can kiss those goodbye. That area's going to transform from a lifetime of memories to, I don't even know what to call it, a circus. So, I appreciate what they're doing, and I know it's got to be developed, and I'm sure there's a way to come to a development plan that's feasible for everybody. But this current plan is just like over the top. It's kind of like shooting for the stars and hoping to fall back to the moon. You know, shooting with such a ridiculous level of demand, hoping to fall back, and if they fall back, they still make a killing, okay? It's what I would call the equivalent of trying to put 10 pounds of material in a one-pound bag, if you know what I'm talking about. So, I believe that the development's not in the spirit of Heartland. I believe that if all of you were to lay in bed at night and think about how you thought that area should have been developed, knowing the way it's been, knowing the way it is, and you think about how you would have developed it, you would have never even imagined this kind of density. It's just over the top. So, I think that if you would, you never would have even imagined it, and it never would have came forth. I know you had some plans that were brought to you previously, years back, but that was in a different time, and it was never developed. So, as far as I'm concerned, it never happened. So, in my opinion, just because a plan is brought to you guys, and your job is to review these things and approve these things, just because it's brought to you doesn't mean you have to accept it. I say, hold the line on your ordinances, let them bring you a plan that meets your ordinances. In watching the video, I felt like there was negotiations already kind of going on. I don't know how this works, but to me, it looked like it was going their way. You know, easements were being reduced, and parking spaces at ridiculous levels between buildings, and snow removal questions that came up. These were great questions. There's some huge logistic problems, in my opinion, inside this development. So, you want to talk, you know, and beyond that, beyond the effect of all of us, you know, in the community, what about the people that are going to live there? That want to just park their car, and they can't get a parking spot, and they can't unload their groceries or their kids, because somebody else had a friend over, and they took their spot, and a heavy snowfall, and everybody's bunkered in. I mean, do you guys get what kind of a cluster this is? And I think it is called a cluster, isn't it? So, my feeling is, something's going to happen, I know, but what needs to happen needs to be heavily scrutinized, and in the best interest of the community, and not in the best interest of the developer. They're going to make their money, sure, but in the end, they don't even live here. So, that's my feeling. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else this evening in our first call to the public?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Troy Gritten. I live at 13890 Hartstone Lane. Just recently moved here, two years ago. I just retired from the Marine Corps. Brought my son and my daughter here so that they can grow up in a wonderful community. And the way this place is now, it is perfect. I am sure you've been other places. The things that I have seen lately, coming back here, this place has been, this place has come home. This community is wonderful. But what is happening right now, people are not paying attention to what is going on, and you are making a decision, in my mind, based off of the possibility of a profit. That is what is wrong with this nation and this area right now. This community, I'm sure every last one of you have lived here longer than me and can feel it better than I can, but apparently, you're losing that appreciation. And once you lose it, you're going to let all of us suffer for the things that you think now are okay. Everyone's children, grandchildren that are here have the right to be able to grow up in a wonderful community. Everything that I've heard that is being proposed is already available. Why do we need to add more housing? What's it going to give us? We don't have the law enforcement to be able to manage it. We don't have the firefighters to be able to manage it. We've already talked about it in 59. We've talked about the parking places. They're just looking at it very quickly, and I got it, I'm looking at it quick. There's nothing but profit that we're talking about, and nobody cares about the profit, except for the developer. Sir, do you live here?
Do I? No.
So, and it doesn't matter?
He's our outside consultant, and we have a...
What, how do we bring in an outside consultant?
Well, it's... Yeah, I know. I mean, at the end of the day, I don't think you should be directing questions like that. That's not appropriate.
Okay.
But at my point...
You're right. You're correct, and I apologize for that.
We have outside consultants, we have engineers, and we, it's like a lot...
Why do we bring in an outside consultant?
Well, we're not going to get into a question and answer right now.
Okay. Very well. When does that part happen?
We'll write down your comments and your concerns, but using consultants for professional services within every organization is standard operating procedure.
Right. Not saying it's not.
We have consultants in all areas, so...
Right. Absolutely. Why do we bring them in? And if we're not going to question and answer now, that's fine. When does that happen?
I guess you would have the opportunity to talk with our planning director and maybe our township manager at another time.
When would that other time be? How do I schedule that?
Give a call to the township hall and ask for one of them, and set up a time with them.
Okay. I will do that. But at the end of the day, we bring in outside developer, or I'm sorry, outside consultants without actually looking through everything. And I got it. You bring in an outside consultant, and that's an outside view. That outside view is only outside as much as how you taint them to look. If you come in and pay someone and say, hey, I need you to look at this room and tell me what you think it's going to look like in blue, whether you know it or not, you've already painted them with, you want blue. It's coming in, it's happening. They're going to give you what you pay them for. It's happening. The people that live in the community that aren't paying for anything other than the taxes and living in here and enjoying it, they're the one you need to listen to. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Good evening.
Hi. My name's Kathy Egits. I live at 2239 Peppermill Court, and I want to date back a little bit farther than anybody else previously. I was born in 1960, and I lived in Highland, Michigan until 1975. However, my grandparents lived on First House on the left, on Pleasant Valley Road. Olive and George Egits. Down the road was Giggler's Farm, and that's what this community has been. I just found out about this. I'm a little nervous, but I just found out about this yesterday, and I remember driving down M-59, and you used to come through Heartland, there was the Oasis Gas Station, the Mobile Gas Station, the Speedway Gas Station, Bucky's Pharmacy. And from that time, we moved to Heartland in 1975. I finished my high school career at Heartland High School. When I moved here, the school that is now the senior center was the new high school. So, I have seen this community grow in leaps and bounds, and it just amazes me the amount of traffic. I work in Flint, I drive through this intersection every morning, anytime between 6:30 and 7:00 o'clock. I've seen accident after accident after accident, just going through this portion of it. It's dangerous pulling out. I get people pulling out in front of me all the time, going down 59 right now. Young kids trying to go to school, coming down Clark Street, going through Meyer. I've been through Brighton, I've been through Howell recently, and Howell, there is a similar development that they tried to implement out there, just past Michigan Avenue and M-59, and it went nowhere. The stores are empty, people don't, aren't residing there. We have a gas station here, we have gas stations at Hickory Ridge Road. I don't think this development adds anything beneficial to this community, except for more congestion, more people. I actually grew up in the house right now that is next to Heritage Farm. It used to be the old Armstrong House that was on the corner before they moved, or before we bought, my parents bought that, we moved it back, 13-room farmhouse, and that's where I grew up. That was all open property. Bullard Lake was there, we used to fish there with the people that resided there, and I don't see anything but this, just adding more congestion, more traffic, more deaths to this community, and I see absolutely no benefit. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Janet Vogel, 13171 Dunham Road. I have just, we just got back in town and found out about this project this week. I've been over to look at the plans, and it's pretty, I agree, I'd say 10 pounds in a five-pound bag, but a few things come to mind. One, the development that the previous woman was speaking of, up west of Michigan Avenue, and it hasn't been very successful. I think it has improved, from what I understand, but it didn't take off with businesses and a vibrant whole community. I would like to see a study done of how many vacant commercial properties there are in Heartland. I would like to see how many residential properties are available, and take that into consideration as to whether we need this. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anyone else? Let's close our call to the public, and let's move on to item seven, which is the Newberry Preliminary Plan Development Number 535P, a mixed-use development. So, if the applicant and whoever you'd like to have up at the table would take your seats. For those that have been watching the previous meetings, this is our third evening of the preliminary review for this development. We have been going through it in great detail, as those have watched. We've been using our planning consultant's letter dated March 29, 2016, and when we left at our last time, I believe we were on page 11, and if my arrow is correct, we should be starting on item E. I believe we completed the conversation on the sidewalk, M-59 to building 13, and I believe we should be starting on item E. Does that correlate?
I think that's right. I don't know that item E is necessarily one that we, it's a pretty minor point.
Right.
Just a little bit of a deviation where people will walk instead of using the sidewalk, I think, if it's not lined. I don't know that we really need to discuss that, or we could just go on to the next
Go on to...
Point, which is F.
F?
And so then, F, we suggest that crosswalks should be provided at the east and west ends of the east-west residential street on the south parcel, and at the west end of the mixed-use street.
Could you, you got a pointer there, or?
Not have a pointer with me again. I have to...
Somebody got one after that?
Yeah, so just, crosswalk here where the street comes in there.
Okay.
And then, we're suggesting at the end here as well, so that you have the end of the block crosswalk. That end of the block crosswalk there.
Okay.
And then likewise, at that end of the mixed-use street.
Do you have it, Joe? Okay. Do you guys have any comments on that?
That's fine.
Is that fine with you?
Sure.
Okay. So, that one turned out to be rather quick. So, let's move on to item G, Greg.
So, G might take a little bit longer. So, we suggested you discuss whether or not a system of pedestrian ways would be appropriate in the proposed park area adjacent to the wetlands on the south parcel. As it stands, those areas are likely, in our estimation, to be perceived as part of the adjacent single-family backyards and therefore not used. And so, that's the area that's all around the southern, eastern, western periphery of the single-family residential lots.
You could only put something on the dark gray, is that correct? Not the pattern?
Oh, without a permit, you could only put something on the dark area. The other areas, you could have boardwalk, certainly. You know, that's something that would be likely permitted, but it would require a permit.
Yeah, I think, did we in our informal talk about maybe woodchip path or something, or did I dream that?
No, we did.
Does that all work for you, or something you're interested in, or?
If we could get permission to do like a woodchip pathway, it would be fine.
I think we talked about that on the north. I think in that natural setting, something like a woodchip path, I mean, the homeowners' association's going to have to replace it, you know, obviously, that'll be their maintenance item. What do you guys think of that? I would hate to go in there and start putting in paved sidewalks through a nature area.
I agree. No. You may have an issue with the not, with those areas that require a permit to even put in a woodchip pathway. Sometimes you can get a permit, but it's tough getting a permit.
Well, as I say, the issues normally are with areas where you want to fill, and so, for example, if you look at that point behind the single, yeah, right about there, where the regulated wetland actually touches lots, I mean, doesn't have to touch lots necessarily, but that's how it's laid out right now. You know, so to cross that area, you know, you might be talking about something like a boardwalk if you're going to get it permitted. Otherwise, you're right, that you may have an issue trying to lay something in there. You know, that would be fill within the wetland.
Could you take a look at it and see what you...
No, it seems to me that you might want to, I need to get the pointer to work here. You might want to connect a path from here to this entrance, and then maybe come in and have a loop here that goes back to that entrance. Maybe you don't cross the wetland, because that plant material is so aggressive, you wouldn't get woodchips to last in there. And then maybe you do something down here from this area and connect something there, maybe crossing the wetland with a bridge or something, small pedestrian.
Does that work for you guys? Have them put something together?
Yes.
I think we're up to, you good with that, Greg? Got it?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the only thing I would say is, the more you, the more you make it visible and define it, the more people are going to understand that it's there. And when it's left to be an amorphous, you know, property line that people can't see, then they're not comfortable using it.
Yeah, well, I know in the previous development, I had, we had a small sign that designated as a nature trail walk. It wasn't very big, but it was on like a four-by-four post, and...
That's what I was going to suggest, we do that in radiant township, just a small sign that says it's a natural area.
Yeah, some kind of, you know, signage helps. Anything that lets people know that they belong there.
Right. That it's open for their use. Okay, well, that would conclude item 11 on that page, and now we're up to item 12, the architectural and building materials. Greg?
Sorry, I just have a question on the pedestrian circulation. You're showing a crossing across M-59. Is that part of this project, or are you just hoping, once the traffic study comes in, that you would do a walk crossing, or right there? I was just curious about that one.
Yeah, that would have to be addressed with the traffic study to make sure that the light is timed for it and everything, so if that's allowed by M.D., and the traffic light does go in there, then it could have a best response.
Okay. Anyone else on pedestrian circulation? Sorry about that, Sue.
It's okay.
All right, architecture and building materials. Greg?
So, they went into with the specific sheets for each use type, you know, some detail, as we've mentioned before, about what is allowable in each area. The thing that we wanted to bring to your attention is the use of vinyl. So, as we discussed previously, also, vinyl's a permissible material for walls, decks, porches, fences, for the residential use areas, other than senior care, although there's some discrepancy between the chart on sheet nine and sheet 14, and whether or not that's permissible for the senior residential as well. And then fiberglass doors are permissible as entry doors for residential as well. Up to 5% of EFIS is also allowed in commercial and senior residential areas as accent. Less concerned about that. We think that you should discuss whether or not these are the kind of materials that would be consistent with the sort of extra effort that you expect in trying to qualify for PD zoning, and that would be consistent with a PND type of project.
Okay. Comments?
I'm not sure I have a problem with the vinyl. I think there's enough architectural design in it to offset. And the vinyl's broken up quite a bit. I think they changed vertical and horizontal in some of the homes. I did have a question about garage doors. I didn't know if they're all gonna be the same or different, and how they're gonna limit the styles of garage doors, but not really that big of an issue.
Sure.
We're working now, our new company is doing the garage door design goes with that design.
Okay.
So we're breaking up garage doors, and glass of most of them. We have probably half of those different garage doors for different looks.
Are they gonna be steel, or fiberglass, or wood, or?
Generally insulated metal.
Comment on the front doors. I put in front doors, I've had fiberglass. Is there, is there another product? I mean, they have steel and fiberglass doors. You get into real wood doors, you know, but I don't think that would be in this price point, or this climate.
Well, generally, we're using fiberglass door. The metal doors dent, and the fiberglass doors are a little more expensive, but they hold up better, in my opinion, so.
Did you have a concern with them, Greg, in bringing it up, or what?
It depends on what the, you know, what level building materials you're talking about for this, you know, for this project, and whether you want a higher-end caliber of finishes or not. And, you know, a lot of historic districts, for example, you know, you would have wood Wood doors don't go with vinyl siding, that's for sure. So, you know, I don't know that there's a distinction between steel flamed doors and fiberglass doors.
Okay.
That's of any great significance.
Okay.
I had a question. Greg, what is your thought between the vinyl and a different material for the siding and a home?
Well, I think there are some other options besides vinyl that are, you know, more permanent, and you don't, that aren't necessarily paintable. I'm not an architect, of course, but, you know, you think of other, you know, color-infused boards that can be used, that have more of a wood-like appearance than, than vinyl does. You know, as soon as you start down, you know, the vinyl is integral to their whole scheme of things right now. It seems to me it's in a lot of places. And so as soon as you take it out of one place, then you need to address it in those other applications as well. I think there, you know, it's kind of a threshold question whether vinyl's an acceptable material here or not.
So do you see in your price point at all that you could change that material out?
It's difficult, and I'm not aware of the color infused that holds up better than vinyl. The new generation of vinyl siding, the color retention has extended warranties, and it's probably the best material as far as holding color and being a non-maintenance material.
No, I didn't mean to suggest it holds its color better than vinyl. I'm just saying it does have a permanent color similar to vinyl, you know, like hardy board or something like that.
Okay. Then hardy board, you would stain every five to 10 years, depending on the material.
It is, it's not maintenance-free.
Vinyl siding, the color retention is good for 20 years, and probably beyond that, even a darker color. So the vinyl siding industry has become much more sophisticated. And as a certainty, it has a monogram siding, and years ago, they brought it to me, and they had three pieces of the vinyl siding and three pieces of cedar siding stained. And they just laid the board down, and from two feet away, you had a hard time telling the difference, because it was actually embossed off from a true cedar board. So for us, when we look at what the market wants and wants to pay for, until you get above probably $500,000 price point, we're not finding that people value that. So, and the vinyl siding products have become more and more sophisticated, especially over the past 15, 20 years. So that's our thing. We can do more and be more flexible and put money into other architectural pieces and things that give the overall appearance of the community that we want. So.
Okay. I, I'm not, I'm understanding exactly what you say. I think the price point's gonna somewhat dictate what the material is. And I don't want to be your specific architect down to that nth detail on the project. My last home, we used a six-inch vinyl versus a double four. It gave the appearance of that hardy board look. Have you ever, and in the architecture you're proposing, I almost feel like a six-inch fits the look more than the double four. Have you used that before, or would you consider that in this application?
Yes. In fact, what we're doing is, because a look that's out there that we really like, is where you use the wider siding on the first floor and then a narrower on the second floor.
Okay.
In architectural magazines or builder magazines, that's happening all over. So we're looking at wider vinyl siding material, which is considerably more expensive. But that's a look we're just doing on our new elevations. And so yes, the answer would be yes.
I mean, I could, it looked pretty good, you know, and...
I like your comments as well on that, Larry, but, you know, also the idea that it's hard to look at a rendering and a picture.
Yes.
It's gonna look like, you know, like out in public. I like it if it's broken up with some brick and other architectural elements. I don't want to see, you know, I would not like to see, like, some of the apartment complexes that we have in the community.
Right.
You know, whole, you know, whole, one side, it's just all vinyl. I just don't, it needs to be broken up.
If you look at our matrix, we have, we've done that. Really, the way we looked at it was kind of a sense of scale. So the residential units, the individual detached units, can be 100% vinyl. And then to the bottom's point, the way we get good quality architecture out of that, good design, is through the architectural features and everything that relates to that. As you step up the scale of the size of the buildings, to the apartment complex, to the senior center, to the commercial buildings, that vinyl gets diminished more and more if you actually look at the percentage, percentage of vinyl that's allowed on those types of buildings. So we recognize that as well, and you're, you're not gonna have any of those larger buildings that are gonna be 100% vinyl. It's not allowed currently in our submission.
I think part of what's making your architecture appealing is the fact that you are not building a vinyl box. There is a lot of extra, and we're looking at the senior center at the moment, but your homes have that same look. The whole program has a similar look, where you've got the, some of the, the corners sometimes are highlighted in the white, or the porch details, or the different things you do with your gables that help break that up. I think the overall look is appealing. We just have to make sure when you come in for final of those, that we've got that overall look. We don't want to see vinyl boxes, you know.
And we're willing to work with you on that. I don't know exactly how to do that, but by combinations of details that we'll put in.
Yeah.
So that somehow, because I don't want just the vinyl box.
You don't, the developments I've looked at of yours don't have vinyl boxes in them, and I would hope you wouldn't change now. Now, in the plans, every particular residential style has a paragraph stated on who designed that particular presentation, although you're saying that may not be the exact home or building we built. But there are words in there that would indicate that we're going to carry something more than just a vinyl box through the program.
I wonder if we could, could we switch to slide 110 for everyone's, just be able to see that?
Is this what you were looking for here?
Exactly right, yeah. Maybe if you can zoom in on some of those pictures, just to give the audience and everyone an idea what we're talking about, or they're talking about with regards to breaking up and features.
If I could, things, things that we do, we do windows on all four sides. I mean, the easiest thing that I see everywhere is just no, nothing on the sides. If we do shutters, we do shutters on the sides and the back. If we do window wrap, we do it sides and back. So we live in three dimension, and architects quite often draw in two dimension. So they give you the front elevation, as soon as you turn the corner, it kind of lacks all of its appeal. So what we want is something that looks good from all directions. So the detailing we do, we do the larger posts, so we're not doing like just a basic post. And we use posts that are by a company, HBMG. They're no maintenance, they last forever. We could do wood posts that eventually will rot out and require painting. These posts are more expensive, last forever, look beautiful. So we try to do no maintenance, looks nice from all angles. That's the objective. That's what we've done on every development we've done, and that's what we intend to do here.
Are the pictures that you're showing on the plan, for example, the apartments, representative of what you would envision for a building that could contain up to 60% vinyl? Or would that picture represent something that might have 40% vinyl? Trying to tie the chart to the drawing, to the pictures.
The chart actually came from these drawings.
It did.
Yeah.
Yeah. Moving to the restaurant, convenience store, when I look at the chart, I think I'm seeing that the commercial will have no vinyl on it, is that right?
Correct.
But the detail in the package right now, maybe it's just gonna get updated. It does note, like, there's vinyl on it. But the intent is, commercial buildings will kind of go chart code, and there would be no, no vinyl, right?
That's the intention.
That's the intention? Yeah, there's that sheet that shows that building. I think, um, have to find it. You have a sheet kind of dedicated to that elevation. It's 13B, sheet 13B, top elevation. If you just zoom in on that top kind of elevation.
Right.
I think it points to, it will say vinyl siding. You see the third callout?
We'll have that.
But that, but the intent is, just follow the chart.
Well, on the, yeah, on the reese of middle. Well, I don't want to jump off track here. Your first phase, which is this, this is part of.
Part of.
The gas, the gas proposal is part of your first phase. That is coming in when you come to final for the PD.
Correct.
Correct. So all that will need to be cleared up for that.
We had the commercial design too, or we, we had the commercial design by the same architect out of Orlando, Florida, that did a lot of the bases of our houses too. So we wanted to have that same, somewhat look and feel, a friendly look come through the community.
Right. Joe, where are you on this?
Okay.
Is you're okay? Sue?
Mm-hmm.
Keith?
Fine.
Fine.
Tom?
Okay.
I have a question. On the chart on sheet nine for single-family, under doors again, why do you call out the front door to have a wood screen door, and other doors can have aluminum screen doors?
And I guess I'm not sure, because it is extremely rare that we put a screen door on the front door. With, with the new metal doors, and with windows opening, and with air conditioning in all houses, I don't think I've installed half a dozen screen doors in the past 10 years. And if I did, it likely would be an aluminum door, so I'm not really sure why that's on there. I didn't catch it.
I think the text that's in there is probably a holdover from the previous submission, which came from the ordinance, and it's probably, it may have even been changed in your current ordinance at this point.
Could be.
So it's something that the architects just didn't pick up in editing that.
Okay.
Yeah, my point being is, I would hate to see a wood screen door on the front door.
Agreed.
Greg, is there anything else you wish to us specifically discuss on architecture? We haven't discussed much of the senior center. You said there's a discrepancy in material.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a minor thing. I mean, I think you should go through each of the, each of the sheets and make sure you're comfortable with what they're, what they're showing you. I didn't specifically call anything out in my report.
Right.
And, I mean, there's nothing that jumps out at me as being extraordinary or concerning, other than I wanted to draw your attention to the, to the issue of the vinyl materials, which you've now discussed and resolved. But I would, would say make sure you've gone through each of those sheets and are comfortable with what's being represented. Some of them are dramatic in terms of their, their scale. We've talked, we talked at the pre-submitting meeting, of course, about what the corners are gonna look like, but that's very important to you, what those two corners are gonna look like, and what the view from the street is gonna be. And this may be an appropriate point to have a discussion about the sheets that represent those, those cross-sections at the corners.
Okay. Are there any other comments on the residential then? Understanding that you may not see exactly that house in the plan that they submit, but it will be of similar in nature. That's what you're agreeing to.
Right.
And the chart with the architectural materials on page nine is what they're proposing. But as you stated, you're still working on some of the details of those specific plans. So we're good?
And we will submit the actual house at time of permit.
Right.
So.
Right.
There will be a chance to review that with, certainly within the building department with every lot.
Okay. Okay, so do you want to talk about the corner features again? I know we had some discussion on it, but can you pull that up for us, Troy? The, the, I don't...
Well, the actual architectural sheets are 13A and B on the perspective of the 16.
One of the things that we talked about our informal is the, the roof of those two corner features and the use of what we refer to as dissonant colors. I think originally, I think on one drawing, it's green, and on a more updated drawing, it's beige. And we'd want to watch the colors on the corner. I mean, we generally don't use a lot of color in our commercial, and in our office, you'll notice, color in residential is less controlled, and we know that you build colorful developments. But so the public knows, this particular group is not going to specifically be building these particular corner units. They're, they have the opportunity to set all the guidelines that those units will be built with, and the individual they're working with in collaboration with you has come up with the drawings that we're seeing.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I would agree with that. We want something that's subtle and blends into the community.
Right.
Still has some exposure for commercial, but I don't want the red or the gray.
Right.
Roofs on that.
Okay. So we're looking at predominantly brick structures, because that's what the commercial component is stating the building materials are gonna be. And they are allowed to have metal roofs, and that is what you're showing there. And any other questions or comments on those?
I'm just... I think, I'm sorry. I was just thinking that these, these are in the corners, that elevation is going to be much lower than the road itself, correct?
What are you doing with the elevation on the, the south side's probably most noticeable, because the north side, you're fairly flat with the because the north side, you're fairly flat with the road. You're set the same elevation. How are you going to deal with that? You going to build that up? Because I think, I think the building's built into the hill almost.
Right. It will not be the same level as M59. It will be a little bit lower. I think it's on the south side. I think it's four or five feet.
Uh-huh.
If I recall.
What we're, I guess where I was going with it is, when you come, because I live not far from there, when you come up, if you're coming westbound on 59, or you're going, you know, when you're approaching those corners, I'm still trying to visualize what would be there in the corners, how that would look. And, and I mean, am I looking down or is it, I mean, how, because the elevation drops probably six feet there?
It's quite a bit.
It's quite a bit.
On the south.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I mean, we're, we won't change the grade much. It'll be built up a little bit.
Okay.
Obviously, but it's still going to, like I said, it's still going to be a four or five foot drop. So, in terms of the structures that are there, I mean, they're pretty tall and, and pretty significant in terms of the way they look. So, it's not like you're going to be looking over rooftops or anything. You're going to be looking at the facades of, of those buildings. But really, our intent is on both corners to develop something that is nice signage and kind of demonstrates that gateway to Artland that you guys work.
I think that's why we put the top gazebo, so that that will stand out and mark that there's commercial there. But we picked up in designing this, and again, Don Evans worked, I worked with Don Evans that I've worked with for probably 15 years. We came off from an idea, if anyone's familiar with East Lansing, there's a gas station there still on 78 and Abbott Road. And a developer who was always probably the top end developer of Lansing, built a berm around it and a stone wall. So, what he did was, instead of a gas station that you typically think of with pumps.
Cannibals.
You know, you can get milk and eggs now or whatever, and there it is, harsh and standing out. We wanted it to look like a landscape feature. We don't want to completely hide that it's a commercial area, but we want it to be subtle. We want it to be soft from, especially 59. Because it's also the gateway to our residential area. That's one of the reasons we maintain architectural approval of anything that gets done there, is I don't want anything that is not a gateway to the community because it's also a gateway to my development as well. So, that's, that's the feeling that we're trying to get there. And you see that on the bottom slide, where we're building into a berm. And so, the brick wall becomes, and that's actually a wall to a building, becomes the place that we can identify the community, and it ties in, and it's kind of a soft here. And we're not looking at gas pumps. We're looking at bright lights. So...
Joe, I think this wall here is that wall there. That building does not sit at the, why this one's not working well, does not sit at the 59 grade. If the floor of that building is down low, and I believe by reading this, that, that that corner, the two outside corners on the left are the same corner, or the ones on the right, I believe when I look at that. Because watch the roof lines of the two. So, I think your M59 is here, and I think your gas station's down here, or the car wash.
Mm-hmm. Correct.
So, part of the wall is in the side of the hill.
Yes.
So, what looks tall in the top view is only tall from inside the development.
Yes.
You're only seeing a piece of it, the upper, two-thirds of it or whatever, from M59, is the way I interpret your renderings.
And that still gives us a nice wall to do a sign. Quite often, when we do landscape signs, we do them four or five foot tall. We put letters on them. The bushes grow over it, and you don't see anything. So, we wanted something that got up so the New bury Place remains visible when the landscape matures. So, we think it's a great tie-in.
Yeah. I think, I, I, I think it looks nice. I, we just have to watch the colors on it.
Yep.
You know, we don't want it to look like a circus tent.
We'll do it.
I'd like to see more detailing and more photos of it. I feel it's just a little bit too heavy-handed and doesn't quite have the level of detail to kind of break it down. So, it's just, I think, you know, as you come in for your next round, maybe we can get more comfort level of how it, because your homes and things have that fine detail, more community. But this is getting a little bit too commercial, too large scale for me. I'd like to see the roof and things detailed out with a little more.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Keith?
Just my comment.
I don't have any comments.
Okay. Down here?
So, I would agree with Sue that more detail would be better. Kind of having a hard time grasping that the big letters on Newbury Place at the corner and the very brick wall is kind of the first thing that jumps out at me. So, does that tie into community and the neighborhood that Sue mentions it? I don't have a good feel for what it really is going to look like on that corner.
Maybe in your detail, you could give us a few dimensions. You know, how tall is that wall? How big are those letters? Could I go stand next to the N? And would it be as tall as me? Or is it three feet high?
Well, I think also if you had a broader view.
Yeah.
Of the corner and somebody standing in the southeast corner and what it would look like, or somebody driving westbound, what it would look like.
So, you have some cross-sections in the neighborhoods showing the street elevation with the homes. Maybe you could do a cross-section across M59 there also?
I think we also could maybe put a person, you know, scale a person in there so you do have that feel.
And it's a perspective.
Right. Right. And the height of, how tall is actually the, the highest point here or the, the median?
I don't have that. I don't have the top.
If you could get that when you put the detail together.
Just wondering what it will look like next to the development, excuse me, next to the homes. The homes will be in the background quite some distance, but maybe the commercial at the front could be, you know, maybe it could go more of a broader view, showing more of that. And compare it maybe to, you know, to what the house size would be. I know that's going to be quite a distance away though.
And I know we mentioned it in the informal, or maybe the first meeting here when you showed this slide, that we would never let that 7-Eleven sign be up there.
Right.
Okay.
Seven-Eleven.
Not, anything against 7-Eleven. We'd never allow a sign up there.
I think it's going to look better than a normal gas canopy, but maybe we need to compromise somewhere in between. We'll see.
Any other questions on, both sides are fairly similar in appearance, both corners then? Any other questions or comments for them on the corner feature? Do you have any comment? We talked about the single family. Do you have any comments on the multiple-family housing? The, let's call it the apartment component. Any comments on the renderings that they gave us?
No. I don't want to put them up there just so we can just see them together.
Could you scroll down to those, Troy?
Yeah, I'll try to find if they're up.
Yeah.
There.
So, these units have garages on the back, a one-car garage? Is that what we discussed at the last meeting?
I think it's a combination of one and two-car garage.
One and two. And we were looking for, when you get into that, at the last meeting, we said, could we see what the back's going to look like? We've got three sides. We don't have the fourth. Curiosity.
Yeah. I was interested in that as well.
From the standpoint of our requirement for varying roof lines, wall lines in and out, ups and downs, that rendering would appear to, to accomplish that with ease. Any comments on the buildings?
Where are the HVAC units going to be?
Pardon me?
Where are the air, air conditioning units going to be for those?
Um, I haven't gotten that far yet.
Okay.
So, we have some courtyards. I don't know. Some of them would go in the courtyards. I'd rather not. I'd rather they went along the sides where possible. But we're going to have to look at distances of, of running the lines too. And, but we'll want to screen those off. I don't want to see rows of air conditioning condensers.
I think when you bring the apartment component, I think it's one of the components within here that probably raises my eyebrow the most because our experience with apartments in this community on their aesthetic appeal is like very low. And so, I think we'll be highly critical of the whole program. But I think we're going to focus in on the things, like I said, the roof lines, the ins and outs, the details. Taking a large building, and you've, you've scaled it down by your architectural features, understanding that it's hard to see all the detail. But we're also not going to be up 10 feet in front of that building all the time. We're driving by and going to see second floors and those types of things. I think that look is very important.
If you have looked at the floor plans of these two, what you really have is projections coming out and then courtyards going back in that will serve the front doors for two or three units. So, there'll be little landscape courtyards. I mean, I, I think it's a very cool, interesting floor plan. Yeah. I don't have a pointer, but, oh, I do know.
You do.
I just don't know how to use it. You see these courtyards?
Mm-hmm.
So, they're coming back into units that, oh, I haven't gotten the right spot here. Yeah. So, we're, we're doing these little courtyards so they can be landscape-friendly. I think it's going to be cool. So, it's not just a flat-faced apartment with porches. So, it'll give it dimension and character, that dimension of soften, the look and feel of it being a larger building.
When you say you use vinyl on, on your buildings and that, and I'm sure this will be vinyl siding where you're using siding, is that's what the chart calls for, the deck materials as far as durability or the handrails, are those going to be, do you envision those being wood painted or stained? Or are you going to use some higher composite-type material that maybe is a little more maintenance-free? Have you, have you thought about that?
I haven't built a deck out of wood in a long time. We use all vinyl rail, and we generally use vinyl decking. Where we might be decking over a living area, we use a, I can't remember what the product is, but it's basically a membrane product that is a tan neutral color. So, no to the wood. Where I can avoid using wood that's paintable and has maintenance, I do it. So, I got rid of the womanized railings and the painted railings, painted posts a long time ago.
Okay.
We offer the Trex product as an option, but most people stay with our, with our vinyl because it looks good and maintenance-free.
Yeah. I think in an apartment building, it's more of a concern in the maintenance. We've all driven by apartment buildings that don't look like, they don't wear well. They weather. And ultimately, you see them ripping the decks off of them 20 years after they're built. But, you know, they look great for the first 10. In the second 10, they look like they need maintenance. So, if you're not doing that, that would be a plus.
And that's why we use the vinyl even more than the Trex. The Trex is, and vinyl are about the same price, and they're both premium, very expensive materials, probably 30%, 40% more than using the wood. But when we're doing a community, two or three years later, I look over and I'm trying to build a house next door, and the deck is already starting to look aged. I just, that was something I got away from 15, 20 years ago. So...
Any...
Can you, can you pan down a little bit so I think we can see, the public can see the elevation? If you, no, I didn't go the other way.
Can you blow it up a little bit, Troy?
I think I can.
So, we're looking at one side of a building then?
That would be like the side on the end, correct?
Yeah, it'd be an end. And then here's across the front.
So, basically, you see the bottom two-thirds of the first floor is masonry, and the rest of that is vinyl.
And we're used to in our PD seeing building materials, samples of building materials and that. Since it's not called out on here, are you talking dimensional type shingles versus a traditional type shingle? Have you picked that type of material yet?
Yeah, we'd be using a dimensional type shingle, yeah.
Okay. Are you going to be able to commit to colors on buildings or ranges? Or are you thinking that you, when you come in for a final site plan approval of a phase?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, on these apartments, is it an apartment upstairs and an apartment downstairs? Or are they two-level apartments? Did you see what I'm trying to get at?
It can be both.
Right.
The building is actually quite flexible in a mix of one, two, and three bedrooms. So, you have different configurations inside. But the layout is flats right now.
Okay.
So, that they would be one-floor and then second-floor units.
You know, that, you know, in some, I almost, like some of the condos, the attached condos that are multiple attached condos, they typically are two-level and living space upstairs, first floor, you know, more of the, or bedrooms upstairs, living space all down.
A two-story townhome type.
And that's what I was just wondering, if these apartments are going to be set up like that? Or are they more or less?
They can be. The way the current floor plans are, they would be flats.
Yeah, I'm looking.
And we will want a number of them being flats just because we'll have 55-plus. I'm in that group. So, the fewer stairs I have to climb, the, the better it is. So...
And for the public's benefit, we asked this early on in the program, the only rental units in this program are, are really the apartments and potentially the units above the mixed use? Or those are even sold as a mixed-use unit as one? You don't know yet?
Don't really know on that one yet. Could, could be either way, but potentially those in the apartments are rental.
Okay. So, the duplex clusters and the single-family homes are all for sale-type units?
That's correct.
You guys have any more questions on the apartments? How about, can you scroll the cluster homes for us real quick?
Yeah.
Or the duplex, whichever page is next?
If you guys up again.
Wrong way. Need a lot bigger. There we go. Anything you'd like to tell us about the duplex units?
It's just a motor court design. It's popular all around the country right now. It takes the place of row houses and some of the other bigger buildings that were being done. So, it gives everyone kind of at least three sides that are private, patio, front porch. Again, it's designed, the original design was by Don Evans from Flor, Orlando, Florida.
And there's a unit, behind that unit is the garage for that unit, and then attached to that is the garage for the unit behind that. So, if you're thinking duplexes side by side, these are duplexes.
Front to back.
Front to back. So, they're very different from what most of us are used to.
What that does is give us a streetscape that is small, single-family house-looking.
No garages.
And then, and no garage is shown. So, and then we take the motor court. So, one driveway serves four units.
Mm-hmm. Any comments on the architecture?
I'm, I'm still trying to, I'm getting it slowly, but how it works. So, the back units, it looks like you go in on the side entry?
Can you scroll?
Can you kind of show the plan? Because I see we're seeing fronts here.
It's probably over.
So...
So, basically, if you look, this is the driveway coming in.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, right here.
Right here.
And then garage here, garage here, garage here, garage here.
Uh-huh.
So, you come in, pull into a garage. They've got two parking spaces back here that they can also use as a turnaround. And the elevation, the streetscape that you're seeing is essentially these units here across. So, in the elevation, you'll see there's a tree here that you can see. And then there's another one that looks like there's a tree here, but that tree is actually in the, in the back.
So, those back units, back to that, if I'm living in the back unit, am I getting to my front door on the side of that building?
The front door to that building is here.
That's the side?
Correct.
Okay. And that we don't really quite see yet in the elevation because the elevation we see is the streetscape.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's, that, I was having a hard time understanding it.
What we could probably do is slice down through like we're in the middle of the driveway looking at that hole.
Probably, be good to know.
Yeah, we could provide more elevations on that.
And then the back side that maybe is facing someone's home or whatever, we'd like to probably take a peek at, see what that is too.
Do you know if the front unit and the back unit are the same in terms of their appearance? Or are they meant to look like two different units, you know, different colors or different architectural features?
The... The architectural features will be similar and probably the color will be the same. That's something I haven't really decided. But we want it to look, in fact, the whole motor court should look very, not exact, but it should have a similar look and feel.
Okay.
They are for-sale units, so you know, you could have a front unit and a back unit that elevation-wise are not the same.
They probably have the same elevation, the front and the back, but at least they'll have the same amount of detail, the front and the back.
Yeah. Scroll back to the elevation. So what you might see is, you might see on the front of the house, this elevation, on the rear of the house, that elevation, or this elevation, or that elevation. Follow what I'm saying? Because it's for sale and we'll offer the units in the elevation.
Yeah, because the common tie is the garage.
Right. But then we'll have the look-alike ordinance that will not allow, you know, the same elevation next to each other in the way our look-alike ordinance reads.
But again, the entrance is on the side?
The entrance for the rear unit is on the side, correct.
And we're looking at the front?
Yes.
With the entrance at the front.
See, you're not building them until you sell them? You're not going to build them as like a spec then?
We may build some specs, yes.
But basically, you'll be building them as you sell them?
Correct.
Okay, that would be the plan. But we'll have to build a cluster as models. We really need to build the four-unit cluster together, just because it's fairly tight and they share the driveway.
Yeah, people need to know.
My plan would be, I would build a four-unit, have a couple of the units as models, and then sell off from that.
Can you scroll down a little bit? I think there's some photos of some actual?
That's a similar community. That's the Avondale community.
That's not duplexes.
Those aren't the duplexes?
But alley-load or would look similar.
Same scale of product.
Okay. So those are more like your single-family homes?
Yeah, these are single-family alley-loaded. And we actually just won a ballot award, which is Best in American Living Award. It's a national architectural award for this community.
This one was an award-winning? This was award-winning, you said? So when you say backloading, people actually drive alleyway and they park back?
Almost like the apartment buildings are. They're loaded on the back.
Loaded on the back.
So it's like garage to garage.
Yeah, you can see there's a cut right here that goes back to the alley that will run behind the homes.
So those homes actually have garages? They're just in the back?
Yeah. But the look will be a similar streetscape. There'll be fewer driveways, no garages on the front. So what we'll have is just the clean elevations and porches going down the streetscape.
So are these that we're looking at now, they're not the same then?
That's correct. These are not duplexes. I have not built this cluster duplex product. But this is a similar look, feel.
Same scale basis as what the duplexes would be.
What, I guess what you're saying is, the approach of where it is on the road or on the street is kind of what you expect the duplex to look like?
That's correct.
Okay.
The duplexes actually are going to be farther apart. You can see, these are, these are an example of homes that are very close together. In the case of the duplex, every other one, you'll have a driveway between it. So they'll be a lot farther apart, actually than what this streetscape is.
Okay. Any other questions on the duplex or comments? Troy, can you take us to the cluster homes? Can you bring the site plan portion up so the public gets an idea of what the cluster home program is? And could you explain it to us on how this works?
This again is a shared driveway. So we have the drive shared. And I think on the previous plan, what we had was a row of townhouses back here that were alley-loaded with garages all in the back. What this does is give us not quite as much density, but a similar density. So when you drive in, again, you have the, from the street, you have no garages. So you have porches, you have a nice streetscape. You have what amounts to an alley. What I found is true alleyways are wasteful. They're difficult to build, they're more expensive. This becomes fairly efficient to build. What we've tried to do is make sure that there's 20-foot of parking. So there's two parking spaces at each unit on top of a two-car garage. So four parking spaces. And then front porch and entry here, front porch and entry here, front porch and entry here, and here. And we've put these at a 45-degree angle with the idea that everyone has some privacy in a deck and from the back, it's not a straight line of squared buildings. It's a sawtooth effect so that the corner is the only thing that's close to the lot line and then it moves away. So it's a softer, I think, cooler appearance from the back and gives us a great streetscape, good density, and good parking.
Will there be fencing between, you know, we're going to mirror this and it's going to be the same type of right next door to it. So between where those decks are close to each other, will there be fences?
What we've done is some screening fences. I've seen units where they have figured out how to sort of fence everyone in with a private area. What we will do is some sort of screening fences where the deck is visible or, to create privacy at these outdoor patio areas. But we're not trying to do perimeter fencing, and I'm not, really not trying to fence these in. I want to have it open and the space flow and the landscape feel natural.
Can those fences be showed on the plan and where the elevations, just to see what they actually look like?
There is in the packet. The fences for the whole program are in there. They're an ornamental-type looking solid white with some, at least the picture shows some lattice work on the top.
We use no-maintenance vinyl fences typically. But again, nothing that paints, nothing that requires maintenance.
Are you looking at all of them being two-story like this?
No.
Or is there going to be some single-story? Is it going to get broken up?
Yes. A lot of them will be one-story.
That's what I thought, because the market for the two-story just seems like more and more of the folks are transitioning to a single-story as you get older.
And we can provide some single-story elevations that do the same thing. He's showing this with two-two stories. There's two markets that I feel this serves well. One is the empty nester market, and I think that's the biggest market for this product. It's a lot better than an apartment, a lot better than an attached condo, and some of the other options that are out there. The other one is young families, young professionals, families with no kids yet, and that'll be the two-story product. So that combination, but I would guess actually, I would expect close to 2/3 to be single-story.
That would help in terms of breaking up some of the height and issues throughout, because of the different elevations, I think, would get a little better.
But you would cluster the two stories together and then the single stories together? Or you would actually mix them?
We could mix them. Sometimes we'll do the two stories in the back, sometimes the ranches in the back. But typically, I would think of a cluster being a similar product. So I would tend to not segregate, but look at, if I'm appealing to young families, because that's what the two-story is, it would be my preference to have those together. And when I'm going after empty nesters, I would tend to predominantly be the ranches.
Okay. Any other questions, comments on the architecture or anything on the cluster home product? Got the mixed-use product?
Someone's been through this file.
What page is it?
There you go.
So 113?
114. So a question I have for you on this one. There are living units above these stores. Is that the concept of what mixed-use means? Or not necessarily?
Not necessarily, no.
It could be office, commercial.
Okay.
That would be the mixed-use.
So would there most likely not be windows on the facade on the second floor, but could be on the sides or the rears, or there could be windows on the face?
Yeah, there could be. I mean, you're going to, if you're going to have a living unit there, it's, we'll have to address egress for that somehow. So more than likely that we'll, we just, we don't show anything here for that type of.
Right. Okay. And most of these buildings are brick with EPHIS trim, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions on them?
I just want this to kind of come up a level. To me, it's pretty harsh. It's not in keeping what you've been showing with your other products. And I know that it's just conceptual, but it seems not related to what the other look you've been giving.
And it is conceptual at this point.
Yeah, I know.
It's a placeholder. So...
I would have to agree with you. I mean, it's, when you don't have, it's kind of, because you got the commercial that you talked, we talked about earlier tonight, metal roofs, brick. This is a little, still a little unfinished. So it'd be nice to have a little bit more detail, or a lot of detail.
Okay. Any other questions for my mixed-use?
We would see all four elevations eventually. Right now, we're just, you know, again, it's conceptual, but inevitably, see all the sides of the building?
Yeah, again, what we've talked about is you wouldn't see that until it was submitted as a site plan supplemental.
But the intent is that all four sides are going to look more like a front.
Like we discussed before, the four sides will be a front elevation.
And the elevations will look more like blending with the rest of the project too. So we, like I said, this is kind of a placeholder to show how the building size or footprint could be. But as we engage the market or build something ourselves, then we will do a specific plan and come back for approval on that.
So we'll see those details when you submit a site plan for that phase?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions on the mixed-use product? I think we've hit all of them now.
Did the senior?
Ah, senior. Thank you. The biggest building in the bunch. Now, this one is going to be submitted, as we said earlier, with the first phase, correct?
First phase one, yes.
Comments? I think they've done a nice, from what originally was on a piece of paper to what is now, they have done a fantastic job.
Yes.
I don't know what you said to him, but he heard you.
It was over several conversations and getting our thoughts aligned, and I'm quite happy with this look and feel.
Yeah, he's really broken it up from what it was before with the in and out, the up and down. It's a larger building. The changing of the building materials sort of flows with what you're proposing in your whole project, so it looks like it's bones.
It's a good-looking building.
Yeah. Any other comments on the senior facility? What are you planning on using? Do you know what, is it final or a hearty board? Will it say another surface, or do you need to verify with him?
I don't recall.
Okay. Apparently, there's a conflict in there Greg had mentioned.
Yeah, I think the one, the chart on nine suggested that it could be vinyl, although this sheet suggests that it would not be.
We actually have the developer here for that. Would you like to have him speak?
Yeah, I mean, it's just what's the intent?
You'll need to have, at the supplemental, you'll need to put down what it is. It doesn't look like there's a lot of whatever it is. It looks like there's brick.
Brick and glass.
Brick and glass, a lot of trim.
Right, or some stone.
Some stone.
We're using polster stone, brick, and we're using cedar-shaped vinyl. It's the high-end cedar-shaped vinyl. It's not your horizontal vinyl.
Okay.
MDO trim, select our columns on our fascia, it's all Mingus Creek. All our sockets are three foot wide, not typically one foot wide. The corbels holding up. And standing seam on the high grubs.
Well, I didn't know you were here, but you heard what I said. Big difference from what we saw. Big difference.
We wanted to think within this.
Yeah. Well, thank you for doing that. It made that part of this easier. Thanks.
I've got a question on this senior center. The HVAC units, do they protrude through the wall?
All of our units for the rooms, and I think you might show it on the other elevation. We reached that, they're under the windows. They're flat, like hotels have. So you have a drill on the outside, the unit's actually in the room.
Okay, so it's a flat drill on the outside.
It's a heating and air-conditioning unit. So you see the little?
You can see them right here? See those little rectangles?
Yes.
That's what those are.
Yeah, my question was whether they protrude off of the wall, I mean?
Yeah, like two inches, two or three inches, I think it is.
Yeah. My recommendation would be to consider some landscaping across the total building.
There's extensive landscaping across the front. The back is a drill that goes down the roof inside and toward the kitchen.
Yeah, my concern was just the north and south.
I'm all about landscaping. It's one of our big features.
Okay. Any other questions on it? Comments? Okay, now have we completed all of the building types?
I think so.
All right, thanks, Troy. Greg, can you address item 13 for us real quick?
Well, it's just a process thing. These are going to be condominium projects, and so your ordinance provides that the preliminary condominium plan be reviewed in coordination with the preliminary PD plan. And so whatever the supplemental guidelines are in section 6.3, they need to be following those along with this plan.
Okay.
I assume it will be not one condominium, but a series of condominiums, or maybe not. I don't, I don't know how they plan that.
Yeah, that's correct. You've got a copy of the draft master deed that we did, but it is a master deed, and then it has subdevelopments or sub-condominiums underneath that. So each type of use would be its own condominium. So the senior center, for instance, is a sub-development as it's described in the master deed or a separate condominium.
But the senior lot would be a lot within a condominium?
Correct.
Okay.
Within a master deed.
And so then I, whatever that plan is, and it doesn't mean condominium plan in the sense of exhibit D to your condominium documents. It means what it means in the ordinance. You know, that's a term of art from the ordinance. But that plan that shows what those lots would be then should be part of this. That would, I think that would be your preliminary condominium site plan that should run concurrently with this.
Okay. Item 14. And I know, Greg, you haven't attended many of our meetings typically, and we do have some of these, well, actually, we have all three of these review letters. Typically, we don't address a lot of them at preliminary, other than say, have you received them and do you agree with, or you'll want to deal with those particular agencies by the next step so that they are in agreement with what you're doing. So you'll have to get through the fire department with their turning radius, for example, in their letter. Not a big discussion here. Ours just is, you need to get them, you two need to agree, and he needs to put in writing that he approves the plan. Okay.
I did appropriate point to note that we did receive now, I don't know if it was in your packets, but we did receive from MDOT their preliminary review of the traffic study dated April 15. So that is now available. I don't know if you want to go through that and any?
Well, I don't think we need to go through it. It's not the document that everybody in this room or at this table is looking for yet. Basically, it's saying they agree with your number generation. You've probably seen it, meaning the car counts that you're using. But there's a lot of what-ifs and buts in that letter.
Yeah, there are some things they didn't agree with in terms of whether warrants are, you know, what the warrants are that they're using and whether the warrants are met for, and this ties into who's building.
And its aesthetic impact, again, we can't answer the traffic issue right now. We probably can't have talked about the aesthetics. So as you mentioned, coordination with MDOT, the road commission, and the drain office are all going to be necessary as part of this process. And any negative comments that those agencies would have have to be resolved before we could move forward with this, with this level of approval. Shall I go on?
Yep, let's continue with four.
And so number four, compatibility with the comprehensive plan. There were specific principles that were agreed on for the special planning area in the 2015 plan, and we review those. One is a variety of housing forms. One are public facilities and other neighborhood amenities. And so we comment that the proposed park facilities include a wellhouse, related storage, and a site for fire station. Various park areas and plazas are proposed as amenities. Another principle is that pedestrian and vehicle links between internal land uses and adjacent property that is not necessarily located within the special planning area should be provided. The north parcel, we observed, is fairly self-contained, does not have connections to adjacent sites with the exception of Heritage Park where they are proposing a connection. The south parcel does stub off streets and drives to the property to the west in three locations. So the next principle is that could be walkable pathways to the township settlement area and other public and private facilities. We observed that it's connected internally via an extensive system of walks, but besides pedestrian improvements along M-59 and the single pathway to Heritage Park, there are no other pedestrian connections outside the planned development. For example, no sidewalk is proposed along the frontages of Pleasant Valley Road or Fenton Road. And you've indicated, I think, that Fenton Road is not necessary. The next principle is that it harmoniously coexists with pre-existing historical and natural features. So we note that the removal limits for existing vegetation have not been specified or quantified. We talked about that in the review. We can't evaluate compliance with that standard at this time. And then the final principle is that include landscape, streetscape, traffic, and architectural solutions that are superior to design and visually enhance the community. Design that respects the existing historical features are essential. We just refer you to the discussion about the impact statement regarding the prior principle above. So we can't really evaluate that yet. The next criteria is unified control. I think the discussion that we have indicates there will be unified control. And that's our review of the criteria.
Any comments to any of that? A little work to do. Any other comments or questions?
I think it might be helpful to have either Troy or you perhaps kind of explain where the process goes from here.
Okay, well, yes, and then I'm going to come back with a couple of points that the audience had asked. As you are well aware, those that have been watching at home or here, this is the plan development process in Heartland Township. It is a six-step process. Within each step, there are individual steps. There's actually about 12 things they have to do. They're on the step three with the planning commission. Step four, after they're done here, would be to move this same process to the board. And then they'll come back here again, and then they'll go to the board again for what we call final. So this is the heavy lifting or the very intense workload phase of the process with the planning commission. This took three evenings, which is an extensive amount of time, but we understand it's an extensively large project. Typically, what we would see happen is we need the revisions to be made, and then we need to have them come back. And we would only review the revisions that were made. We wouldn't go through a complete site plan review again because a lot of the items that we've talked about or that they've presented are fine. So we'd only discuss the items that are still left open or that needed a change. So it would not take anywhere near as long to get through that. But that would be the process that we have. And at the conclusion of this evening, we'll give some direction to them beyond what they've already heard. But as many of you know, you came to call to the publics, you came to our public hearing, we were, all of us were busy. I have three pages of your notes of questions and comments you've made, and as they've been answered, I've been crossing them off personally, and I'm sure many of you have. And one of them stumps me just a little bit because I don't know how to answer it, so we'll probably have to give it to you and maybe between you, your engineer, our engineer. We've had several people address water table levels and their wells and, you know, putting a large well in. I'm not sure how that would impact. I think that's something that ultimately they'd be looking for. Communities have large municipal wells. The city water that Heartland provides to its residents, those on the sea line, are wells. Just, they look bigger than the well you have at your home. So there are ways that they go through that, and there are water tables and aquifers at different levels and all that type of a thing. But at some point, we'd probably like to give some kind of a statement of how that's looked at. How does, how do we know that these wells won't dry up in a few years?
Yeah, I mean, basically, the process is up to MDEQ. I mean, there's a whole permit process that we've started for that. We've actually done a test well and have some data that shows, you know, how quickly the well recovered and those types of things. Not sure, at least off the top of my head, where we are as far as the aquifer that we've tapped into and proposed tapping into versus what there is in the, in the area, but that certainly would be looked at. And as a part of the MDEQ process, there is another test well that's drilled, and a lot of testing data then that gets pulled out of that for a lot of those types of things. How much water's being used, what sort of demand is it looking like as far as the surrounding wells and those types of things, the chemicals that are in the water and all of those types of things. So there's still a lot of stuff yet to come as far as that MDEQ.
And you are proposing a ground storage tank?
Correct.
So they're not going to see a water tower in their backyard. It's going to be down on the ground.
Well, we're, we're not going to have something that's underground.
On the ground, it's going to be surface.
Yeah, we probably will enclose it inside of a building is kind of the thoughts that, as it stands right now.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments from Sue?
I do. I know Greg, you kind of glossed over this one, but a lot of people have asked about, you know, the demand for the fire and the police emergency services, and I'm kind of trying to understand how that, when does that come out? Do you kind of figure out the demand from the number of houses and things, and then we figure out what we can serve, or how do we sort that out? Does it happen, or?
I would think the fire department would look at that and make an opinion on it. Well, we don't really have a police force, so.
Okay.
Fire department, I would think if they had a concern about it, I know they want to be at that end of the township someday because they see growth there, but as far as increasing the calls, there's probably a certain percent they've looked at, but I don't think it was alarming.
Okay.
And they can adjust.
Yeah, the fire authority.
It's volunteer system, so they can adjust.
Well, Heartland's part of a fire authority with Deerville Township.
Right.
And it looks at all those issues in determining siting and so forth. And I know that this area had been one area that had been looked at before by the fire department, whether they're going to, or fire authority, but that'll be a discussion.
Okay.
On the police issue, I can only tell you that we're in, we continue to have dialogue with the county and our neighboring townships. That's an issue that has both financial, technical, and political aspects to it, and so that's going to take time. And of course, this is an election year, so there's a lot of things that tie into that election year. But we, we've heard the township, from the township board's perspective, we understand that that is an issue, and we are, there's some things we're carefully looking at. You know, I don't need to go in anything more.
No, and I think we all need to understand that these properties are all going to pay taxes too. So it isn't as if these people are coming and aren't going to contribute their share that all of us are already contributing. So as demands for services change, they are also going to be providing, they are part of a tax base. So they aren't going to take the money that's just there now and demand additional services. There is additional revenue being generated. Not a lot, but it's there. Yes, Mike?
I want to go back to the water.
Sure.
We moved too quickly. Would you provide for us some details from MDEQ exactly? I'm going to assume that a large well of this size to feed a community is probably going deeper in depth than the standard homeowner around the area is, so.
I think when it comes to water and the DEQ.
Pardon?
With what's going on, I think it's, it doesn't matter. I think with, in terms of what I'm saying is, the water with the DEQ, with the new regulations coming down, it's going to be very extensive, I think.
Yeah, I just want to make sure the public gets an answer to, which was a very sounded question and concern in that area.
Yeah, we can provide.
Whatever details you provide back to us for the public would be appreciated such that they understand exactly how that works relative to their existing home well system. Now, the storage for that is on the west end of the north property.
Yes.
And so inside that building area is where the above-ground water storage tank resides.
Yeah, and right now, for the first couple of phases, there's not even a requirement for storage. According to MDEQ, you've got to have 150 units before storage is even required. So technically, we could probably be close to building out the entire north parcel without having to do any sort of storage before that would be required. But the intent is, yes, that it would be co-located or somewhere in the vicinity of that wellhouse structure and would look like a, look like another residence.
To put it in perspective, Mill Point does not have storage.
Okay.
And it services 206 homes.
And what I was going to state for the public is, Heartland Moon Bowl Home has two wells, similar to what you're proposing, and one of the little garages alongside of the main office building there is where the storage tank resides.
Yeah.
Yeah, the city of Brighton has one right downtown, so.
So again, just to.
And we may decide, I mean, we've got to do some analysis cost-wise yet, but we may decide to put some of that storage on the south side since that's the area, obviously, that it's going to service, and it may move entirely away from, from the north side, but.
And I think for the public's benefit, you're proposing not a, a storage facility that is a tower.
It would not be a tower, no.
No, it'd be a, correct.
And I believe you're also proposing to build it to township standards and ultimately look for the township to take it over as part of a public water system.
That's been the suggestion.
At least, that was what I heard before. We'll see what it comes to.
And what that water tank would look like is, it wouldn't be noticeable, correct? It would be built at surface level, and it would look like it was in one of the homes.
It's an amazing thing.
I have a couple of things.
Sure.
One of the residents mentioned light pollution, and I think with our strict ordinance with all lighting aiming downward, now we're pretty strict on the ordinance. I don't think there'll be an issue with light ordinance.
No, it can't exceed, it can't go over the property line, your property line.
Right, it can't go beyond the bar.
So it won't be in their backyards. It can't.
Dark sky type lights?
It's not quite there, but it's downward-directed, shielded. Your light reading at the property line is zero, and we're not looking to create the next glow in the sky, so. But we haven't had a problem with the modern light fixtures and the commercial developments we've had and the LED lighting, which I assume is probably where you'll be going. It actually seems to work better for, for our developments. So I think that's been a big.
I believe that your lighting ordinance as well.
Yeah, it's fairly common ordinance out there, but not dark sky.
Yeah, I think with the new light fixtures, LED, a lot of them, they're only offering the one type pretty much anymore, so. Couple more.
Yep.
One of the residents also mentioned, I think tonight, about a, hinted about a residential analysis, market analysis, which we just did. So we do have an idea of the amount of commercial space we have in the township and residential space left in the township. And when we updated our mastery, or our future land use, we included that analysis when we scoped out the new locations. So we're pretty much trying to say that's been done, so we do, we do have an idea that how much residential and commercial we have and how many people we can absorb in the next five years also in the township, and there is a demand for that as well.
And beside the extensive market study that township did, we did our own study on this piece of land and are kind of going off from that study too of what the market would want and absorb. So we're not just trying to go out and build a bunch of houses and hope they come. We've tried to do as much factual research as we possibly can.
Right, and I think everybody needs to understand that this isn't going to happen overnight. This isn't even going to be a couple of years. Do you have a build-out estimate that you're thinking?
Six, six years is what we're currently showing in our phase plan.
Yeah.
And if it were completed in 10, I would consider it a little thing.
Right. So we aren't going to get an influx of 1,000 new residents in two years.
One more.
Sure.
Also was mentioned, Troy can probably comment on this, but sending out the messages for public hearing, I know that happened, and maybe you might want to explain the policy on that.
The public hearing was April 7th. That was the first meeting that we discussed this case. We sent out notices to property owners within, I'm not sure I'm going to be able to quote the ordinance properly, 300 feet, I think it is, from this affected property. So a lot of the properties that directly surround this are fairly large properties, and it's very possible as a result of that noticing, it didn't actually extend beyond some of those properties. So that's a requirement to send that notice out. Plus, we did a notice in a newspaper. We certainly noticed this on our township websites, and of course, it's broadcast on the cable as well as the township website as well.
And all documents are available on the website, correct?
Yep.
So I, I think that was all the ones that I captured.
Sue, do you have anything else?
Just something we didn't touch on. I know you're kind of working out your detention ponds and the sizing and all that. On the north side, when we drive straight in on the boulevard and we look straight at that one, I think is a detention pond, is there a sense that when we look at it, it looks like there's going to be maybe a retaining wall? Are we looking down, because you need storage capacity? Are we, what are we going to look at? Is it going to be just a?
Yeah, basically.
Water level down?
If it's a retention pond, it'll be dry.
It'll be dry.
Yeah, it'll be dry. And so it'll just be a maintained, mowed, retention pond. But yes, up where the two smaller apartment buildings are, there is a retaining wall there currently so that we can build one of the buildings fairly close to that retention pond.
And your grading on your detention basins won't require fencing?
No.
So it'll be gradual?
Yeah, I think it's a five-to-one slope or something like that. The incentive, but I think only one of them actually is fenced and the rest of them are at the, so that ideally, when they're dry, they can actually be used.
Right, okay.
I'm curious, on your Meridian Township, how do you do the detention ponds out there? Are they the same in Meridian Township?
They can be. I mean, it's engineered based on 50-year, 100-year flood conditions.
Right, and I'm just curious, if there's something that can be done more aesthetically with the detention ponds as opposed to having just a dry mode? There's, there's some new, you know, there's, not new, but there's ways dealing with detention ponds that, that help retain the water and, you know, and take care of the things that end up in the water. There's going to be sodium chlor, you know, from the roads, from the salt, and things that ultimately make its way there, I would assume. So I'm just curious, maybe we had a.
Looking at a rain garden type of concept?
That's kind of where I was heading. It would provide possibly an aesthetic as well as a functional environmental.
And it could be at the base of this if we find there's enough water to sustain a rain type.
That's going to be, yeah, that would have to be part of it.
If it's sand and it dries up, and we may not be able to.
May not be able to do it.
Actually adding water to make it happen, but.
Right.
We will look at that. I like doing that sort of thing, so.
Yeah, I think the way that they're currently designed from an engineering perspective is that the water is gone within, it's either 24 or 48 hours.
Right. Well, Livingston County, I know the drain commissioner, I mean, he's been doing some new things here, and it's just something that we might want to take a look at, I guess.
Okay, sure.
And I'm willing to look at that, and I can meet with the drain commissioner, as well as something we could talk to him about is, we've done project-wide drain control rather than doing individual permits on each house or each project.
Do a Chapter 18 drain.
We do a perimeter system, and then we, just less for the drain commissioner to worry about, and I think it's proved to be a much more efficient system.
This is something that I've talked to, we've talked about here in Heartland is developing a Chapter 18 drain program, which is basically developer builds it to the specifications and works with the drain commissioner, and at the end, the drain commissioner takes it over. Is that what you're suggesting?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so that it's not part of the common, it's not necessarily part of the common, it still remains part of the common elements, but the operation and maintenance of those stormwater detention facilities are maintained by the public entity.
And during the construction, it changes the soil erosion process?
Right, right. I, I actually prefer that over a lot, having condominium associations operate and maintain them, because depending on who's running each of those associations, you never know how extensive they're going to maintain those facilities, so. I'd be happy to work with you on talking to Brian on that.
Okay.
Just facilitate that, I can help facilitate.
We've had good success with that, and so.
Sure.
Great. Do we have any other questions or comments from Tom?
I have one last comment for the public, and I think it was brought up tonight regarding the schools and, you know, this, how many homes we could actually see here in Heartland. So the school board is aware of the study that was done, that we could absorb 500.
Yeah, more than they're proposing.
So that shouldn't be a surprise to them, because they have seen that study.
Yeah, and currently, they have open enrollment, which means they bring in a lot of people from other townships and areas, so they would just probably limit that if they got to a point where Heartland could support the school all by itself.
Okay. Last comments. Tom, you don't like anything else?
I'm all set.
Joe, anything? Sue? Keith? Have nothing more? Great. Troy, anything to add? Okay. Typically, what we would see is a revision in a resubmital. The timeframe can move as quickly as you need to move in regards to getting it done, getting it submitted. And then, obviously, as you've seen, we're very friendly with our schedule and trying to work as quickly as we can to get you through. If you can address the issues that were brought, I would think that that probably would happen in one evening. I don't think we'd be looking at multiples. It'd be up for you to decide.
And we'd like to thank the commission for putting in these extra meetings too, and so we appreciate it. It's a long process, but I appreciate that you probably have better things to do on a couple of these evenings, but, so thank you.
Well, you're welcome, and for everybody's benefit, you know, we sit up here, they're, your property owners and their property owners, we have to sit between everybody and do what's, do what's right for all, so we don't look at the two sides as one good, one bad. We have to entertain every proposal that comes in, and, and we do that on a regular basis. There was an expression of, we knew this was going to take multiple meetings, and with the planning commission, I think we offered to do this week back-to-back-to-back for continuity. It helps all of us in keeping it all fresh in our minds. So it's worked out well for, for everybody in terms of the information. So thank you for thinking of us, and we'll look for your resubmital.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And now we will move to item eight, which is our second call to the public for the evening. So if anybody has anything they'd like to say or add this evening, we'd like to hear Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Judith Wilson. I live at 2895 Parkway Place, which is at Dunham Lake. And I had a few, a few comments or concerns. The density of the program, for one thing, if I'm looking at it right, it's going to change the whole, to me, it will change the whole appearance and concept of the eastern end of the township. It just is going to completely give us a different look. A concern I have, we live, are at Dunham Lake, we already have many people in the summer, even though Dunham Lake is considered a private lake, and we have three, at least three park areas for swimming. It is strictly supposed to be for the members of the Dunham Lake community, but we always have a great deal of people coming in from outside the community wanting to use our lake in our park services. And all I can see is this is just going to compound the problems that we already have with people coming in, figuring, oh, there's a nice lake and there's a park, let's go, let's go swimming, let's go use the park facilities. So that, that bothers me. Another question I have, and I admit, this is the first meeting I've been to, perhaps it's been addressed before, but for the life of me, I can't understand why we need two new gas stations. One right across the street from the other. I, I mean, I don't think we need two, but to even have, you know, one would be more than sufficient. Why they're planning on two just kind of boggles my mind. And now you mentioned that they have done some, somebody just recently mentioned that they have done some surveying or to see what the needs of the community are. Have they really looked at, do we need such a large senior center? I don't know. I mean, we already have at least one large senior center. I know we have a very active senior community because I work with Meals on Wheels, and we're part of the senior center over at the old high school, and I know it's probably one of the most active senior centers that the Meals and Wheels group services. But do we need housing for these people? I think most of these people have their own homes or their apartments, so do we need? The whole size of the thing is just what boggles my mind. Yes, I know we're going to have to have development. I'm not going to fight the development, but I'd like to see it scaled down just a little bit. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. A familiar face. How are you?
You'll see a lot of her. My name's Dana Gardner. We have two homes on Fenton Road, 2215 and 2233. We've all been through this, and I'm not going to bring up old questions, but density was the main concern, and I understand, will there be a revised plan brought forward before all this is voted on? Am I understanding that? Okay. And trees for the barriers, the neighbors that are budding up to this property, are we getting the trees like before the excavating and all this mess begins? Or do we have to wait the 10 years before we add some barrier there so we don't have to see it? Those are the questions that I propose. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Anyone else?
Name is Sean Angott, living at 2075 Wilson Lane. This is my first meeting, and this is not page one, these are props, don't panic. I do have a lot of questions and concerns, most of them have been already put out by my neighbors, so I won't touch on all of them. Couple of questions, though, I was confused, has an official traffic impact study been done or requested, or is that happening?
They're agreeing with M.D. on the parameters to get it done. It's required.
Okay, so that will happen, okay, all right. I think like most of my neighbors, my biggest issue right now is probably density. And when we first found out about this, which was late in the game, my first initial thought was, well, they can't seriously be considering this level of density on this property, I'm sure we're just going through the motions, because the Board and the Commission has some obligation of the applicant to follow a certain process. And now, I sit here, and I'm hearing us talk about siding colors and woodchip pathways, and not talking about the fact that we're back to the 20 pounds in a five-pound bag. And I'm a little frustrated, and I guess maybe even a little disappointed, and not necessarily aimed at any individual here, but I'm having a hard time coming to grips with that portion of it right now. When I look at the numbers, and what they're proposing for dwellings, and I use the numbers that are on the demographics at 2.96 persons per single-family dwelling, and I think 2.16 for rental property, I come up with 1,200, 1,300, 1,400 residents on these two small parcels. That's nearly 8%, 9% of the population of Heartland Township now, crammed onto about a half of 1% of the land of Heartland Township. It seems excessive by any measure. So, density is a huge issue, we are close to it. I have to see it, I have to hear it, I have to smell it, and I'm going to be stuck in the traffic. For those of us on Wilson Lane, it's not a joke, getting out of our street will be nearly impossible. And if you go down to Hickory, and you go down there at 5:00, 6:00 o'clock, and you see the traffic coming north on Hickory and trying to get westbound onto 59, you'll see that they wait forever to turn out, because there's no room to pull into the turn lane to make a U-turn to get out, the traffic light stops traffic, nobody can get out, it's a cluster, every day, and I sit in it coming to and from work. One of the biggest things, and I got every revision of the comprehensive plan here, and I've been trying to read it as fast as I can, and it's about as entertaining as a colonoscopy, I'll be honest with you, too. But what the verbiage that keeps coming up is, developments shall be developed in harmonious coexistence with the pre-existing historical and natural features of the township. And every time I look at this proposal, I see nothing that fits into that, and I guess I would channel, and every person here, considering an i-vote, justify to me how you can say that this development fits in with the coexistence of the pre-existing historical and natural features within the township, because it doesn't. We came to Heartland to escape everything that is on this 120-acre parcel. And I'm willing to bet that most of the Heartland residents came here for the same reason. You've brought everything we came to escape. We don't need a Starbucks on the corner. Nobody in Heartland came to Heartland so they could walk to Starbucks. They came to Heartland so they could drink their crappy homebrew coffee, sit on the porch, and watch the deer. That's a fact. When I went through the comprehensive plans, I noticed the 2004 plan for the SPA has a number of three to four dwellings per acre. The 2011, I think, revision was back to three to four dwellings per acre. When this deal started with Mayberry Homes in 2014, I believe, I have the newspaper article that I believe Jennifer wrote, where the, I believe Mr. Whitman said that we believed it would be all residential with perhaps some commercial along M-59. So, as a resident, naturally, we'd look, say, oh, three to four homes per acre, maybe some commercial, this isn't so bad, it's not the end of the world. Well, now, we're at, what, six, seven, eight homes an acre? We're pushing twice that number. Yes, there was a change, the 2014 comprehensive plan, but like Mr. Langer said, the public notices go out to people within 300 feet. Well, no offense, but I kind of find that a little disingenuous. I mean, you guys know that parcels here are large, people are spread out. I'm a driver wedge from this property, and I had no idea until a week and a half ago that this was going on. Shame on me, should I be going to the Township website? Yes. Do you guys know the average person doesn't? Honestly, yes. We get the newspaper, there's no flies here, I'm Italian, we use our hands. My wife custom for the coupons. I get my news from the Internet, but little I do. Facebook is my friend, I guess, I don't know. So, to sit there and say, we sent out the mandatory public notice, I'm sure you did, I have no doubt, but to some point, doesn't someone here say, you know, there's a lot more people affected that exceed a 300-foot radius from property edges? We know there are. It makes it look as though the Commission is trying to push this through with as little opposition as possible. And if you want the will of the people to be had, we need to have the people in here. Every person I've talked to doesn't know anything about this. Every day, for the last four days, I've tried to recruit people, and they think I'm crazy. So, I don't know what the answer there is, but I think the public notice, and it probably needs a little bit of work. One of the things I kept finding in the comprehensive plan was a line regarding commercial development. It says, the majority of commercial land uses within the township can be, should be concentrated around the M-59 and US-23 interchange, and should not be permitted to sprawl along M-59. Why does that not apply in some level to this special planning area? I understand that it's kind of a free-range planning area, and I get that, but the comprehensive plan, while not a Bible and not law, still has some guidelines that it seems makes sense. We have plenty of commercial land down by 23, we have plenty of vacant spaces, I don't know why we're forcing it down into the more rural areas where gigglers are trying to raise hogs. Speaking of gigglers, and I wish Kim was here, I don't want to speak out of turn on her behalf, but one concern I do have, and I know these always come up, I hunted Gigglers' property, this 80 acres on the southwest side. I used to hunt that property long before I ever thought of becoming a Heartland resident, 15 years ago. I could pick out my tree stands where those houses are. I know that in the fall during harvest time, when they're drying corn, it's like being on the deck of an aircraft carrier. So, what guarantees or what considerations would be put in place for gigglers to protect them? Because we know what's coming, people are going to buy, just like when people buy a house on a golf course, six months later, they complain about golf balls hitting the roof. And people buy a house down the road from a gun club, and six months later, they complain about the noise of the gun club. What happens to the gigglers? They have hogs, they have chickens, they're smell. I sat in a tree stand, I smelled pigs for four years. This is a concern that should be taken, and they're on the border, those houses are overlooking the pigpen. So, what guarantees does gigglers have that they're not going to have to come in here and defend their ability to farm? They have the Right to Farm Act, I understand, but it's not going to stop someone from forcing them in here, time and time again, chasing statutes for noise and odors and everything I have a question about the fire station. Who's paying for the building? Is Mayberry donating the land, or are they going to physically construct this substation?
The land.
They're just giving the land. So, the taxpayer gets hit with the millage for building, maintaining, and staffing another fire station to cover a development that none of us want. And the same, I know you touched on it, would go for the police. We don't have police, we all know that. And when we do call, it's slow. But we also know that coming in, and I think the people in Heartland, the community understands that, and we accept it, it's one of the things you give up. And we also know that your safest bet isn't 911, it's 91 neighbor, because the neighbors will be there in a heartbeat, because that's the kind of people we have here, which really lends to my next point, is the development that they're proposing is not going to attract any Heartland residents. We have to be honest, it's not the kind of place where somebody living up near town is going to say, ooh, I'm going to go move into Newberry Place and get myself a cluster home, where I have just enough room to set a two-top patio table out back. This is going to attract a different kind of people to Heartland, which is fine. But understand that those are the kind of people who are going to demand, they're city people, they want, they're going to demand police, they're going to demand schools, and you're correct, they will be taxpayers. But we have a median home value in Heartland of what? Mid-200,000s, and most of the development that's going on is in the 300,000 to 400,000 range, the San Marino and everything going on west of us, everything around us is at the higher end. I suspect these homes are all sub-200,000 homes, some of them apartments, and we know that apartments, yes, you have a portion of your rent is property taxes, and it's nickels. So, I now have a large percentage of people in my backyard that outnumber me 100 to 1, not picking up a share of taxes proportionate to what the rest of us are, but dictating how our money's going to be spent. And I have a concern with that. I don't know that there's a way around it, but understand that, I know there's going to be homes there, I know there's going to be people there, but these are parts of it, they're going to dictate how much it costs me to stay in my house, and how much I spend. Couple of quick points, I don't know your name, sir, you're just that guy in the corner, but you talked about color-infused siding. A gentleman on the end here made a comment that Hardy plank has to be redone every five to 10 years, that's not true. Hardy board siding, Hardy plank siding product has a 30-year warranty, and the color-infused product has a 15-year warranty. And there's also a product on the market called LP SmartLap, or Smartside, I've used it, I don't love it, prefer the Hardy, but that, depending on which finish you put on, has 30-year finish guarantee. So, there are options outside vinyl that would give you a long-term color product. The gas stations, I don't know why we're entertaining two gas stations, but that's a whole nother topic. I think, oh, trees. I know it's come up before, this is my first meeting, they keep showing these elevations with these 25- and 30-foot trees between their houses. How big are they going to be when they go in? Are we planting mature trees, are we planting saplings, not only for their internal, but again, for our outside screening? Is there going to be some forced, you must put a 12-foot tree, or is it going to be look like one of those subdivisions where you walk in, and all the trees are six feet high, and they all match in size, shape, and color? I would rather see a variation in sizes, something a little more natural, something a little less measured out, but, you know, back into keeping with the natural scope of things, so. Mr. Voight, is it, I found this today, is this the survey from Zimmerman Volt? I haven't had a chance to review it, but this is the one you guys were using, or you had done?
Right.
Okay. Okay.
That was commissioned by Heartland Township, so it wasn't influenced by any developers.
Okay, I stumbled across it, before I dug into it, I just wanted to see what it was and where it fell into what you folks were using.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
When we're done, I'm going to ask you to pull up the future land use map, so I think we can explain a few things. Anybody else call to the public tonight? No, I'm going to go ahead and close that. Why don't we do your planners' report, and then when we get to committee reports, I'd hang on, because I'd like to show you some of the history of that particular end of the township, and some of the future that is planned out, so you understand why this applicant is here, and why we're entertaining what they're proposing. So, do you have anything for planners' report tonight? I just have a couple items. I just wanted to let you know, we have hired a new planner, her name is Martha White, she'll be starting May 10th. I believe she's also going to be at the joint meeting with the Township Board next Tuesday, the 26th. And that's a good segue to the next one, just a reminder, joint meeting on the 26th, time is at 6:30, a little different time. Also, it's kind of an important item, as you know, Walmart, this is one of the few Walmart stores that Walmart has decided to move on from. I've just spoke with the real estate agent that is marketing that store, they have had two offers now that have been submitted to them for that store, I believe neither one of those offers would take the entire building, it looks like they're looking to partition that up into two or three uses. And then, lastly, at the conclusion of this meeting, it looks like we will not have anything on the next regular meeting, which would be next Thursday, the 28th, so unless there's anything else-
Move to cancel.
Just kidding. If that's, unless there's something the planning commission wanted to discuss at that meeting, I would certainly look for a decision for the planning commission to go ahead and cancel that meeting.
What do you think, you guys want to cancel that one?
We're already having- I can't imagine the board coming up with anything Tuesday, or next week.
Tuesday, that you need to meet on Thursday?
Right.
So, let's go ahead and cancel that, Troy.
Okay.
All right. Anything else, then?
Nope, that's it.
Could you pull up the future land use map?
Yeah.
For the public's benefit here and at home, the comprehensive plan that gets referred to on many occasions is a document that we do value in the township, and it is a document that is updated on occasion, and it is a document that also ties to what we call our future land use map. And we get a lot of questions around here about this rural character, you know, we moved here for the country, we moved here for those types of things. And as I said earlier, you know, our job is, they're, any applicant is a taxpayer if they own a piece of property, just as you are, just as all we are. So, we use these documents to help us guide us through and protect property owners' rights and rights to developments, and we've entertained many proposals in this township for developments, and some are advanced and approved, and some applicants choose not to advance. But this map is the future land use map. This is different than the zoning map that you're looking at. The zoning map shows you what the parcel is zoned at today, what it is used for. But I want to give you an idea what the comprehensive plan in the future land use map vision Heartland to be, because when we talk about, you know, the fields and the things that we enjoy, those are because they haven't been developed yet. So, we need to talk about where M-59 is going. So, if you can picture, Keith, can you give me your pointer, is it working?
Yeah, okay, yeah.
It is working. It was me. This is M-59 and US-23. The color code, a red here, is zoned commercial, is future land used for commercial, so red is commercial. So, as we move to the east, you see it all converting to blue. Blue is office. And office abuts, the light blue on the north is the Township Park, and the special planning area in the red and white stripe, now, they're talking just the vertical piece, not the jut out to the left. The southeast corner of Pleasant Valley and M-59 is future land used for multiple-unit housing. And next to that, in the orange stripe, is the current manufacturing housing units. So, it's just something that we deal with, and the reason we're entertaining the program that is being presented, is they are aligning their desires with the comprehensive plan. And so, they have every right to present this. And what our job to do is to make sure that we're fitting and following that as best we can. And there is a page in the comprehensive plan, page 86, that deals specifically with the special planning area, and it specifically addresses that it will contain a retail component. So, the things that they're proposing are all the things that were ever envisioned. Now, that doesn't mean it gets approved, it doesn't mean it doesn't get approved, but the proposal that they have presented to us versus the one of two months ago where you heard about the apartment project at the corner of old US-23 and M-59 was very different. And the reason it was very different is that if you look at that particular corner, if somebody's got a pointer that's working, right there, you can see that was future land used for commercial, not multiple family. So, there was an opportunity to say, do we really want to convert that land over from a commercial future land use to a residential land use? And the feedback from the Commission and the Board was very questionable and marginal, and there were some comments of, I will never support it, and there were comments of, I would need more details. But, so, we don't always sit up here, we don't always say yes, and the conversation has led to some of the details of woodchip walking paths, or siding, or roofs, and side- or roofs and sidewalks, because they're aligning a plan with what the future of Heartland Township is mapped out to be. And the fields that we have along M59 are intended to be something else. They're going to be commercial, running into office, running into the special planning area. And it just hasn't been the time that anybody's come to offer those developments. And that should not be interpreted to, you got 7-0 votes for it here. But, the resistance to a program like this would be much easier if they presented a plan that didn't follow the plan. But they're following the plan. And the plan's been in place for longer than I've been around. And I've been doing this job for 12 years. So, it's been there a long time. It's a shock to some people, it's a surprise to some people, and we all get used to things the way they are. But, they're not as far out in left field as some of us might want to think they are. But it doesn't mean that it's a yes. So, I want to stress that we don't talk a lot during the call to the public, because the meetings would be five hours long if we did exchange of information all the time. But, I feel that we owe it to you for having three meetings to explain the future land use in this particular development and this piece and give you the vision of what M59 is, or what it's visioned to be. And I will tell you that when we revised this the last time, we took some of the orange off. We converted, there was orange intermingled in that big section of dark blue. And we felt that we had enough multiple unit housing and if we were going to have anything on M59, we would prefer office uses versus apartments. So, I just offer that out there as an educational, education on the M59 east of US 23.
And I think there's another point too, there's a legal aspect. Most people think, well, why can't we just zone out everything? Okay, you cannot zone out certain uses in your community. People have a right to their reasonable investment-backed expectations of their property. So for example, and anyone that's read our zoning ordinance, and it will make you blush, but there are sections in our zoning ordinance that deal with adult bookstores and...
Theaters?
Theaters.
All of it.
It's all listed in there and have to be in certain zoning classifications. I don't encourage any of the young people to read our ordinance on adult stuff.
Well, it's not graphic, but...
I'm just saying, I blush. But anyway, the point being is you can't just zone people, zone, take property and zone people for, you know, two-acre lots everywhere throughout your township. It's just, you can't do that. It's why there is a manufactured home development in Heartland. It's the reason why Millpoint has the density and Oakbrook has the density and those are all along M59. And a lot of those reasons, those were lawsuits many years ago that resulted in it. So, I think we need to be, when we look at this and we look at these land uses, not just the future land use map, but what is zoned and what's available, you have to be conscious of the fact that there's several things that put pressures on any township. It doesn't have to be Heartland, it could, or city, or township, or village. There's things that put pressure on property. It's that tension between trying to balance the best interests of the entire township with the property rights of people who want to develop. And it's a tough position. We're the ones sticking our necks out and analyzing this and dealing with it and it's part of why we're here. We do this, the folks up here have been here doing this for a while and have done a very good job. And so has the board. And I just, I think the thing that often gets overlooked is that we can't just say no. We have to be careful on how we approach and have an open mind with not just the property owner, but the folks who come here and present as well. And what we can do and what we hope to do is, you know, I think we look at ways to soften transitional, between zoning areas and housing and commercial. We can do a better job at that. I've seen townships, I work with municipal governments, I've seen townships and cities that, if you've seen them grow in other locations, they don't, they haven't necessarily done the homework and got, have gotten their laws and ordinance shored up. And things happen all over. You'll have industrial right next to a residential or what have you. So, I think that's, I think that's an important factor that we need to take a step back. And we're trying to do our best here, but it is, this special planning area, I will tell you, it goes back to, I think, close to 2002 or 2004. That's how far back it goes, if I'm not mistaken.
And I believe honestly, that had the economy not gone in the tank, you would probably see what is being proposed today already half-built on a different plan. That, quite frankly, I think this plan for the neighboring properties is much better. All those, the people on Fenton Road and Deer Path Lane should be much, I understand it's hard to be happy with anything, but it should be much happier than what was originally proposed. Because their property lines were aligned with almost three-story, basically, townhomes. And it was just a wall. And this development, this developer came in and we've tried to work with them to transition and balance as best we can. But, the land is there, they bought it, it has this future land use designation to it and they're presenting a program that if you read this section, they're not far off. We're trying to hold them to the highest standards we can and get the best development we can for Heartland Township. And if in fact this does proceed and go somewhere, I think that we'll be able to look at it and go, we did do a good job with what we could do. But to think that it's going to be two-acre parcels will never happen. It just will never happen. There's too many two-acre parcel availabilities in Heartland Township and they're not located on M59. And the property is just way too valuable. Nobody would pay the price to build two-acre homes on that property, sitting on M59. They'll go a mile north and pay 10% of what those people have got invested in that property. So, you know, I wanted to say it as an educational thing. We are not siding with the developer, we're not siding with anyone, we're siding with Heartland Township and everybody and trying to come up with the best that we can do. And we will always treat an applicant with the utmost respect as we do you. Because that's the way everybody deserves to be treated. And whether we do or don't like their development, we are a courteous, friendly community and we will always be. But if you've watched us over the years, we do know the word no. We do know the word no. As much as it looks like we're talking about things like wood chip pass and you're like, you guys have got the car out of the garage too far, back up, back up, back up. We do know how to say no, but we know when we can say it and when we can't. So, yes, absolutely.
Question. Can you have more say into the type of commercial business that they're going to put up there?
We asked in a previous meeting that they identify things like how many drive-throughs they could have or whatever. I think what they're promoting is the concept of more of neighborhood service-type commercial. I think you're going to find more of a, you know, a dry, well, there's a lot more commercial there than that, okay?
I understand that, but I mean, I guess that's the one thing that really sticks out my mind is, not only is it to me unnecessary, but we're having concerns about water use and sewage and this, and if it's a car, you know, a gas station with a car wash and all, it just compounds.
Yeah.
That type of a problem. Where some other type of a commercial business probably would not maybe impact the environment twice as much.
I don't know how to answer the question. We're given the proposal that they're presenting to us, you know. I will tell you, living here in town and if I leave here, or when I leave here, it's very difficult to go buy gas in this town if you're on this side of the road. I wouldn't think to do the turnaround and go to the Shell gas station. It would take me longer to get through and around and back and my car pulled up to the pump than it would be to actually pump the gas. So, it is the only gas station on the north side of 59, if it's the one on the north. I don't have an answer for you.
I mean, it's, I guess, living in town, like, I don't have a problem trying to get to a gas station, but I never use a Shell because...
It's overpriced.
Thank you.
So is the Speedway.
I tend to go down to Hickory Ridge and...
It's cheaper.
Hickory Ridge and M59 to purchase my gas.
Yeah.
So, I don't care that there's not a gas station on the north side of the town.
Well, one of the things that we have found is we're very under-service by gas stations in this community. I know that people want to believe two is enough, but for a community of almost 15,000 people, anybody, any study would tell you that you don't have enough here. So, in the right location, wrong location, I don't know. Yep.
Didn't the township already approve the gas station on Park Road?
We have. And that certainly enters into the equation of, how many do you need?
And that takes care of your need for a while outside of...
It would. It would. You should also know that ultimately Myers will have one. Myers is waiting for their demand to grow, they're waiting for more houses to come.
Well, and on the east end of the township, just a mile down the road, we have, or two miles, Hickory Ridge has two gas stations.
But those are currently on the south side of 59, not on the north.
So what?
Yeah. Highly unusual, but I'm enjoying the conversation and I think we're talking as neighbors right now, okay? We don't do this, but I think it's important that you understand how difficult the job is and why it is the way it is. So, yeah, any...
With the gas stations, so, two at Hickory Ridge, the Speedway that they are expanding, I believe this year, I got a big...
Next month, I think.
Right. So they're expanding that, then the previous Shell, which is now the BP, so we're at four. Plus the new Clark, we're at five. Plus Meyer, we're at six.
Well, Meyer probably won't come until we hit a larger population, but...
On the north of 59.
Right.
And then, the two that they are proposing, that's eight gas stations within four and a five miles?
Yeah.
There is something, something to say about competition.
But...
Prices.
That's true. I buy mine in Flint.
I buy mine at work, too.
And here is way too expensive.
Yeah. Troy, did you have something you wanted to add?
The Mayberry Homes is proposing to have a different entity own those gas stations and it was maybe the first meeting, maybe the second meeting, I'm not sure. But the person that's going to run the gas station...
He was here tonight.
...spoke and they did not necessarily know for sure if they were going to do a gas station on the north side. I'm going from memory now.
That's correct.
But that person indicated they want to control on the north side and just didn't want another entity to operate a gas station there.
That's correct.
So, there is that potential on the north side that they may not do a gas station.
Correct. There is going, as you heard, there is a revised plan that is going to come, that's going to take the six, eight hours of review time that we spent with them and they're going to resubmit. It will be interesting. We typically see changes and they typically follow the discussion that's been had. So, we'll see whether they choose to leave that second gas station on there or not. Yes?
In terms of the car wash, I don't recall exactly where it's located. I look at the car wash we currently have and how it gets backed up on a nice day with all the flooding on dirt roads and, and, and. Does the location for both gas stations allow for that backup that's going to happen?
I believe it did. We will get into the specific stacking spaces and such. That is proposed in their phase one of their six phases that they're proposing. And we will see the nth detail of that, right down to what bushes, shrub is going where and what variety is it. So everything here, if they choose to proceed and they take this to the final site plan, when they come back next time, they'll still be on that third phase with us and then they're going to go to the board. When they come back the next time to us, then we would see that specific detail. The car wash is on the south side. It's behind that corner feature that we were discussing on what does it look like from M59? That was, what you were seeing was the back wall of the car wash and then the roof of it is what you were looking at.
But basically the backup, as she's asking, would occur within the...
Their development.
Not backing up on M59.
It's looking at, it's on paper and the density, I think we've all spoken about being kind of shell shocked by the density of it all. It's hard to picture that there would be room, you know, for cars.
Well, yeah. And they, I'm doing this off of memory now, there is one or two entrances out on the Pleasant Valley from their development. I think there were two on the south side of 59. There's one on Fenton Road and maybe two on the north side of 59. They're controlling where you can get in. And the reason they're doing that is that they're, we don't want to talk about traffic today, because we all know that traffic is an issue. But there's nobody sitting up here that doesn't have the same thoughts that you do. And they're going to have to mitigate the issues. So, they want it at controlled points. They want to control it, because I can't imagine they're doing this without traffic lights. I just, I just can't imagine. We don't know. So, so I think you're going to find that, I think part of this plan is to funnel it into specific places and they're going to, the backups are on their property. They're not yours. And we talked about the possibility of eliminating the Fenton Road entrance last week. And they are going to look at it. Yep?
Just a clarification question. In McKenna letter, I identified control, it states that the site is under single ownership, but it says Heartland Township is still the owner and they just have a purchasing agreement. Have they actually purchased the property?
That's very typical. It's in the process of being purchased, but most of our developments are not advanced by the owner of the property. Somebody else owns it. And then the final triggering of the sale is when it's all done. So...
When all the land is done.
Right. Right. But that's very typical.
And that's a question, is the completion of the sale dependent on the approval of this proposal?
Could be. I don't know, because we don't get involved with that legal detail of the sale of the land. So I don't know the answer. That's probably not something we would, we would know, because we're the planning commission. Yeah, it's not one that we would get involved with at the planning commission. Sure. You're fine.
Everybody loves to have two-acre parcels and I agree. I would love to see you do everything two-acre parcel. But I think my, my biggest point of contention is, in the comprehensive plan, the 2004, 2011 revisions, it does have three to four dwellings per acre in the special planning area. But that line got disappeared in September of 2015 after this Mayberry thing is in process.
No, I think what it says is the three to four dwellings, but if you read within the comprehensive, within the plan development unit, they are allowed to seek a bonus density for excelling in certain areas. And that's what they're doing. That's what they're attempting to do. So the three to four, what is their, I don't have the number in front of me. Did you have the density, Troy? You just calculated that.
Yeah, I think it's just under five, like 4.9...
They're requesting a 4.89 density and they're, the base density on the parcel is three to four. They're asking for a 4.89. They could be asking for 40% bonus.
4.98.
4.98. 4.98, call it five. They could be asking for more, because the ordinance allows more, but they're not. But, to get that, they're going to have to do some of the things that we talked about. We're looking for exceptional landscaping, the architecture, the things that we've asked them to do.
And by your call, 278 rental apartments?
About that, about that.
And the future land use map, there's another whole 8 acres directly across Pleasant Valley that's also slated for multi-family dwelling, which are new apartments.
Well, this special planning area calls... Well, this special planning area calls for apartments, number one. Number two, the housing study we have says they're not building enough. We need another apartment complex in this township. And that was the housing study that the township paid for, not some developer that you would think would slant the thing. So we're just going with the information we've, you know, with the information we've got.
It's in their sleeping document, you guys.
The other, the other, as they said, you know, they're, they're looking at a six-year build-out, and as he said, you know, if it's done in 10. Take 440 houses and divide it by 10 years, we're talking 44 a year. That's not...
Well, I mean, if you have a residential builder, that's another concern I actually have, is I know how these projects go. This year it's Mayberry, and they get 25 units up, and next year it's Echelon, and they put 40 units up, and they're bullies, and nothing's, nothing looks the same, it's all broken up, zero indoor stuff.
Well, not in this development you want. That's what we're doing, is we're controlling all of it. It's, this unit, this development, if Mayberry were for some reason to not exist and somebody picked it up, it stays exactly the way it is. That's what this PD is about. The picture you see when it's approved is what you're going to get in the end, no matter if it takes one builder or 10. It's all controlled by legal documents.
Is it controlled that, as they say, they have four or five phases, they say by the fifth phase, it's a six-year and they're done? Do we hold them to that in it?
Well, they could build...
Do we keep them 10 years just because?
It can take them 10 years just because. That's because of what the market is. You don't want them to probably put it out there any faster than the market's going to absorb it, because as you heard them say, they'll build my guess, they'll build some models, they'll build some specs to the point that they're almost done on the interior, and they'll take the market demand, and those specs will go up at the pace at which they feel the market is going to run, springtime sell a few more, you know, Christmas time we're selling less, you'll see them dwindle them down in their timing for the fall. But they could build it faster than six years if the demand called for it and they could, you know, do it in fourth. They have every opportunity to do that. But none of the process or the approval steps that we have to go through would be avoided, circumvented, changed. The product that they have to build will always be what has been approved, which is why we're spending so much time on this. And it seems boring to a lot of people, but honestly, this is where we have to do our work, so that in the end, we get what we want.
Will all their infrastructure go in initially, or is that going to phase as well?
That's what they mean when they say they phase it. All right? And we'll get into the discussion, we haven't had it with them, on the landscaping required that abuts to existing residential. In the past, we've required it sooner than later. And it will definitely go in when that phase starts. It doesn't come after.
So from your experience in other projects, we are all around Wilson Lane, next to us is Beckel Lane, further down is the, is the church. As we said, it's going to be even worse trying to get in and out of our streets. Will MDOT, will the township or Lucas Development do something about turn lanes in front of our streets so we can get in and out safely, or does that not even happen?
Well, probably not at Wilson, and I'm, I know the streets up there, I just don't know the names. I know Deer Path because it's right there. So Wilson's just north of there?
North.
Oh, it's east. Okay. Oh, I know which street you are, okay. Well, their traffic study is going that far, so, you know, turn lanes in and out, I don't, I don't know how to answer that. I guess we'll see what MDOT has to say. Their, MDOT's going to be looking at their safety issues, their level of service, they call it, that's how long do you sit and wait at a traffic light? Do we need a traffic light? All those things in the traffic study. And the letter we have, for the most part, is stating the parameters of that and/or areas where they disagree with one another, as we said.
Right now, the school bus pulls up onto the shoulder and waits with blinking lights and it causes traffic problems because people don't know if they're supposed to stop or not. That much more, it's just, it's, when we first moved here, we asked the township, what we had to do is we had to turn, and they said we had to have so many accidents before they would even consider it. So I'm trying to not have accidents and qualify.
Well, one thing to keep in mind, Heartland is a, we're not a donor community on traffic, we're the receiving end of it. Because in the morning, all that traffic that's going by Wilson Lane that's in the morning is causing you issues to get out, it's probably not people of Heartland Township. We're the receiver of a lot of traffic due to the M-59-US-23 interchange. So a lot of the traffic issues you have are, are not even issues or developments that we've dealt with. And so we could have all the development in the world in Highland Township. Heartland Township could say, we're putting gates on all the roads and we're not going to let anybody else in here, because we like it exactly the way it is. And Highland Township could blow their township out, and you wouldn't be getting out of Wilson Drive for days. And it was nothing that we did. It was nothing, it's nothing we can control. We're, we're the receiver of a lot of traffic that unfortunately, this developer...
And that's kind of the point, that we, we, we live at two major highways. You've got 23 and you had M-59. It's a, I mean, it is a major trunk line of the state, state of Michigan, and that, that's what developers look for. They look for access.
But in your experience, has the state or someone ever come in and said, well, for the safety of those people, we'll add something here?
Best way to answer this is, the state's reviewed all the developments we've had so far, and you come to the conclusion of whether they've done it satisfactorily or not.
I mean, that is Clark...
Clark Road.
Here, kids trying to get out of high school, but turn around, you know, going...
That probably answers your question.
Transition to the east side, trying to turn towards...
The Clark Road one is the worst. The Clark Road one...
So, so you, you can see we get a lot of, and, and one of the contentions of this particular developer, actually, everybody, the Clark Road gas station people, everybody that comes here is, they have to deal with the existing traffic conditions. And one of the conversations that's going on between the applicant and MDOT right at this moment is the fact that the applicant says the road system at that intersection right now is inadequate for the traffic that already exists. And we should have to fix the things that we're going to create. Why do we have to fix the existing problem? Why do I have to fix the problem that Highland Township people create at the intersection where I'm putting my development? That is one of the things that these people have to come to agreement with. And every development we've had in here has had to deal with that on M-59. And I'm, down to a gas station has had to deal with those issues. So it's complex, they still have some work to do, they know they have some work to do. But there, they say that that intersection already can't handle the traffic that's there. And that's the developer that was sitting at this table. So they know that. Well, they know they have, they know they have issues to deal with. They just want to deal with their issues. So they're going to figure out with MDOT how to get the rest of them taken care of. So we'll wrap it up soon. I'm enjoying it, but...
Just a quick question. Have they specified how many retail and commercial businesses they plan on putting on both the north and the south side?
If, if you go to the Heartland Township website and pull the site plan up for this development, yes. They don't have a name on them because they don't know. But if you see these rectangular-looking buildings, they're small, there's no strip center in this thing. There are no, no mini mall...
But do they have a total number because they don't count that small?
I'm going to, I'm going to tell you, 12?
Yeah.
I'm going to say a dozen, I might be off by one or two, but it's not 20? Well, they're actually numbered. They're numbered on the plan. I think 12. I'm going to say 12. They're, they're small, they're all 2, 3,000 square foot stores. There's no strip center concept. That's part of the concept they're selling. There's, there, it's not going to look like a, something you'd see up here at the intersection. They're standalone buildings.
Latsin Road and 59, or Latsin Road and Grand River.
Not that.
Right.
But on the one thing that they had up tonight, it looked like it was a strip mall.
No, that's the gas station on the south side.
No, there were the mixed...
It was the mixed-use, I commented about.
They have a couple blocks of a downtown area. They're going to recreate a downtown coming off M-59 to the south. And so they have those buildings on both sides for several blocks. And that's the typical parallel parking, like you'd see downtown Brighton or Howland. That, what you were visualizing, what we were seeing there was that sample of what a block or a building on the block could look like. So there, they'll have them together, but it's more of a downtown-type setting at that point.
But it's still a strip mall? It's one building with several businesses inside.
If you want to call downtown that...
I wouldn't call it a strip mall, I mean...
If you want to call downtown Brighton a strip mall, then yes, I would not.
Kind of like Town Commons has on either side of the...
Yeah.
If you kind of visualize that, it's pretty similar to that idea.
Right.
They are the developer, you've mentioned, someone mentioned, they didn't mention it by name, Town Commons, and how that had sort of not taken off and flopped. This developer is the one that picked it up, and now it's moving. The economy's helping too. But they have picked that development up.
They're kind, yeah, they're kind of restricted on...
But they did say they have to follow the original development agreement, which is what we're doing, so they...
Do they have a while ago?
Pardon?
Did they pick it up a while ago?
I'm not sure of the timing. It hasn't been more than a year, 18 months.
No more than two, anyway.
No more than two. It's fairly recently.
And if you go up there, you can, you can view and walk through the homes that they're proposing to build in this area. And if you walk through or go through, drive through, that little town concept, you'll see that there are now businesses moving in. There's some salons, a barber shop, some, you know, insurance agencies, that type of thing.
I think you'll find a local bookkeeper, I think you're going to find a dry cleaner. I think you're going to find all those little shortstop-type things. They don't have, the biggest building is the senior living, and it's not really senior living, it's more of an assisted care facility. Half of it will be for memory care, and the other half is just, just assisted living. Yeah.
Do they have a specific company in mind who's going to up the building, operate or operate that facility?
They do, and the guy was here, and I don't, we don't know who he is because we're not seeing that information until the next step.
Frequently, frequently, any company owns itself of those assisted living facilities with memory care.
Yeah, we don't have the background on that yet. We'll get that at the next step. But I know it's state-licensed, that I do know. Okay? One more.
I want to thank you guys. None of us out here is particularly happy about all of this, and you take them, and I suspect the previous two meetings were much more contentious. Thank you. You've conducted this room really professional and understanding.
Well, thank you. And we do, when we've said, we do like people coming. We do like to hear, and we do try as best we can to address those things, and we do get answers to questions. But we do like people to be here. We like to know you care.
Thank you very much for your generous time here after the end, this has been very important.
Oh, great. We, we, there's nothing to hide. We're, we're just trying to do a job. Thank you very much for staying this evening, okay? Okay, we need a motion to adjourn, Mr. Kliney.
I've had a long day. It says, I move to adjourn, support...
Kliney and Mitchell, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Pose any motion carries, thank you.